Opened under the law, the pre-Ico ones. Somewhere around that 70 to 79 number would be open. That's not to say that there shouldn't, couldn't be a few additional ones under what we've put in the 130 or 139 ceiling. But that hits the mark of where we wanted to be. And all I've been trying to do for the last two iterations of this is hit the mark that we all already agreed on, that the number should be about 70 to that 100, up to 139. If we pass something which the number is actually 5, but we pretend it's 70, shame on us. If we pass something where it's really 1,000 and we're pretending it to be 70 to 139, shame on us. This is what hits the mark. That's the hard work and the maps that Mr. Reyes put forward. So that's why I would ask colleagues to support that.
Expressing his surprise at the path the city council has chosen to take on this ordinance, District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar questions the process.
Because I was under the impression we are following a certain path, and I'm quite surprised today at the ordinance they see before us. I was under the impression that we had a draft ordinance and that we had proposals and we were voting yes or no, and those that we voted yes were being put into the ordinance. And that today we are going to come back and vote on the 1,000-foot rate, yes or not, or any other issues that come up, and add that or change that in the ordinance. I was ready to vote before the holidays. I thought we could have voted then and moved forward, but some folks thought we should wait till today. But now we got an ordinance that we just got right before this meeting that has a number of other things in there that, but that's not the process that we started off with. So now there's a number of new things in this ordinance that we may or may not agree with, and we have to now go back and pull them off. We're not following the same process we started with. For example, I see a number of things in this ordinance now that I disagree with. Am I now supposed to come back and say, "Let's pull that out," as opposed to the other way? Let's put it in? We're changing the rules of the game here in terms of the process that we're using. So let me, let me ask your city attorney, who brought the ordinance to us. How did that come about? Why do we have a number of new things in the ordinance that weren't on here when we left before the holiday season?
Councilman Jane Usher, maybe we're overly optimistic, but we brought you something that I'll call cleaned up, but let me tell you the substantive changes. And we brought it to you cleaned up in the hopes that perhaps something could move today, but we understand that won't happen.
Mr. President, you're suggesting in terms of process that we vote on the distance requirements today and then have a full ordinance for the first reading next Tuesday? Is that correct what you're proposing? It would give us and our staffs enough time to review these. But with that, I would ask the city attorney's office if you could come back to us and tell us what language you actually cleaned up in terms of what we voted affirmatively to put in the ordinance. And secondly, any new items that we didn't take a vote on, but that you would need us to look at to make an opinion upon, because any slight word changes, anything else that happens could change things drastically. So we want to make sure we're voting for what we intend, no matter what we believe.
So councilman, the answer should be, but we're going to have time to look at it. The answer should be, everything that's in blue in front of you is new. Anything not in blue was in front of you previously.
Okay, but there's also a difference between those things in blue. There are some things that are clarifying language for what we voted on, and there are some things that are new that we hadn't seen before.
Very good.
Right? So that's what I'm saying. I'm asking you to highlight those two different items so that we're very clear. Oh, we voted on this, but they're just clarifying and giving us the legal language versus this is a new idea that the council hasn't voted on.
Easily done.
Okay, thank you.
Insisting we should start small and grow as needed, District 7 Councilmember Richard Alarcon says he's disappointed with what's currently before council and brings up the issue of elderly care facilities.
Members, I came today ready to vote on what I thought was going to be presented. And what I thought was going to be presented was a 1,000-foot buffer on residential uses, which was our last discussion, and had an ordinance been drafted, it would have included a 1,000-foot buffer on sensitive uses. I introduced that motion, and I'm passionate about it, and I will not vote for anything that has anything less than 1,000 feet on sensitive uses. Secondly, I thought we were going to come in with a variety of amendments on the issue of how close to residential. And I'm very disappointed that we're eliminating the, any thing except for a budding, which could be 10 feet or 1,000 feet, depending on what is next door. But I hold that the principle is how close should it be to someone's house? How close should it be to someone's home? And I'm saying 500 feet is a reasonable separation between medicinal marijuana and a home. I would like to add that I'm fine with the language that includes exemptions for licensed residential medical or elderly care facilities. That is not on your map, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of those facilities that would qualify. So we keep focusing on the acreage and the maps that don't even include the number of elderly care facilities or licensed residential medical. And that's going to expand the pool greatly. So I think I want to move in encounter two with all due respect, because this is a very personal decision that each of us is making, and I hope we all respect our opinions on this. But I, with all due respect, would like to introduce a motion that we, that we leave in the 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive uses and add a 500-foot buffer for residential.
Using a specific area located in Hollywood as an example, District 4 Councilmember Tom Labonge asks staff about an existing marijuana collective that may be forced from its current location.
Let's take Hollywood Boulevard from its inception at where Virgil and Hillhurst meet and go west to Vermont. Right now, there is a, on your map, a establishment on that part of Hollywood Boulevard. Now, that is in a C-zone, but is it adjacent to residential?
Yes.
No. What that shows is it's a collective, it shows it's a collective that does not meet the distance requirements. It does meet the-
Okay, I got it. So why do you think that one doesn't? I know, I don't know of any school right in the area. I know there's a fire station up the street, 35s. I know there's the art gallery. Why do you think it doesn't? Is it an R-zone?
You know, it meets, it meets the distance requirements, but what we did was we assumed that that, because it met the distance requirements and separation standards, that it could stay at that location. And then, because there's a, there is an ordinance standard that says that you can't be within 1,000 feet of another collective, then we subtract out any of the commercial acreage. So you'll see on that map, there's a slight amount of commercial acreage that falls just outside that 1,000-foot buffer.
Believing the city as being as compassionate as possible and looking for clarification of Mr. Alarcon's motion, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl asks staff how the motion would affect the proposed medical marijuana ordinance.
What does that do to your maps and to the thing? I just want to know what that motion is that he put out.
My understanding is that the motion would be 1,000 feet around sensitive uses and 500 feet around residential uses. What our analysis showed is that that is the most restrictive scenario of the six scenarios that we analyzed. And what it would mean in terms of the existing 137 registered collectives, four only could stay in their current location, and 133 would have to move.
I see, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to know what it is. I'm not going to talk much today. Today's a bad day for me. 15 years ago today, my partner died of AIDS. And I know what he went through for eight years before he died. And if it wasn't for marijuana, he wouldn't have lived those eight years. It's a shame he didn't make it long enough for the drugs that came along that kept people alive. But he died, and this is his tie, and I wear in remembrance of him. I think our nation's discussion on this issue has probably run the clock, and I'm looking forward to leadership out of Washington to change the federal law, first of all, which is a draconian law. I think our city is trying to be as compassionate as it can under Ed Reyes's leadership. We've put a lot of time and energy into this. And frankly, I've toured some of our clinics. I've gone in with my staff. I've looked at situations there. And I hope the day comes when enlightenment happens so we don't throw the kids away in jail like we have when Schwarzenegger gets up and talks about, "We have to spend more on education than jails." Well, we have to change those dumb laws that have put these people in prison to begin My last point is I hope my colleagues and I can come to some kind of a compromise so we can deal with the big issues of the city, which is the budget and our future as a great city. And I hope to God we can regulate and tax so we can get a revenue stream and get beyond where we are today. Thank you.
Please open. Are we, are people clear? Okay. It's, we're bifurcating both elements of Mr. Alarcon's. His first element, he is saying, is to take out the definition that residential is a sensitive use, but nevertheless to have a 500-foot buffer from residential uses. Okay? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
Okay, that does not pass. The second piece, excuse me. We've got a number of votes to get through. If I can ask your indulgence, please. Our second one is on a 1,000-foot buffer for sensitive use. Please open the roll. This is 1,000 feet from sensitive uses, so which is-
Yes.
Correct. Which right now still includes residential, because that was the last motion that we I understand that. I'm just, where we left business off, we had defined residential as a sensitive use. So Mr. Alarcon's first piece, which was to take that away and to make a 500-foot buffer, failed. So we're still at the same place. So Mr. Alarcon, did you want to, did you want to say no longer a-
It wasn't my intent to include residential in a 1,000-foot.
Okay.
I just wanted to-
So then this is to take out residential-
Per the, the standard-
And to have a 1,000 foot-
Per the standard definition of planning, which does not include residential.
Not to include residential in a 1,000-foot-
But you're taking out residential, right?
I'm taking out residential on-
A 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive uses, which is no longer includes-
But I, but I want sensitive uses to be 1,000 feet.
Yeah, and taking out residential.
Okay. We'll make that as part of the bifurcation. Yes, it's that to take residential out as a definition of sensitive use and to create a 1,000-foot buffer for sensitive use. Mr. Zion?
And just one, one more time, can we get the definition of sensitive use for everyone's clarification?
Sure.
Councilman, I'm on page eight at the bottom. Here are the defined sensitive uses. I'll read them. School, public park, public library, religious institution, licensed childcare facility, youth center, substance abuse rehabilitation center, or any other medical marijuana collective.
Thank you. Okay? Folks clear? Ms. Hahn, did you have something on this? Ms. Hahn, did you have a point of clarification? I saw you on the queue. Okay. All right. Please open the roll. Sir, please, please open the roll, Madam Quirk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, six noes.
Okay, that passes. So I think Mr. Reyes's motion, which was the same thing, but with 500 instead of 1,000, is not necessary, or do you want to vote? I mean, if we vote on that, it would contradict passing that previous one. So now that that's been bifurcated, it's 1,000 with not residential. Okay? So we, it would be, I think, out of order to vote on the second one. Okay? So that will be the instruction moving forward to the city. Yes, what we, what we wound up doing is, is the residential use does not count as a sensitive use anymore, and there's a 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive use.
So your Los Angeles City Council has voted to cap the number of medical marijuana collectives to 70, but allows about 137 collectives already registered to stay in business. Council also voted to prohibit collectives next to residences. The matter will return to council on Tuesday, January 19th, when the decision to keep collectives 500 or 1,000 feet away from sensitive use locations will be made. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall, or the San Pedro City Hall, and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending January 15th, 2010. On behalf of Dave Brown and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the big online world of computers, there are a lot of little things you need to look out for, like viruses that can slow down or damage your computer, or spyware or pop-up ads that are not only annoying, but can pose a security risk. But you don't need to feel small and helpless. Use an internet firewall. Update your software often. Use antivirus and anti-spyware programs, and never open email attachments from someone you don't know. For more information, visit staysafe.org.
L.A.'s in another year of drought. Every drop is precious. Mandatory conservation will save the water we need if we all do our share. Use a broom instead of a hose to clean driveways and sidewalks. Wash your car only with a shut-off nozzle. Fix water leaks immediately. Choose drought-tolerant plants, and run your sprinklers only on Mondays and Thursdays, before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. The future of L.A. is in our hands, and that's a good thing.
L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2010. I want to thank those council members who are here just after the hour pursuant to council rules. Councilmember Alarcon, Cardenas, Corretts, Perry, Reyes, and Zion are all here on time. Thank you very much. And we are awaiting the following council members: Wesson, Smith, Rosendahl, Krikorian, and Hahn. Mr. Wezar is excused today, as is Mr. Labonge and Mr. Parks's excuse to arrive at 11:00. I want to thank members of the public who are here, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts us live on the city's cable system, as well as rebroadcast us each evening, and that we meet on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. And we also are available two other ways for your convenience, through the internet at our city's homepage at lacity.org. We have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, as well as archived footage of our past council meetings. And you can use your telephone as well to call in and listen to the council meetings by calling 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are available online there, as well as all the supporting materials that council members read is available for the public on any of the items that are concerned to you. And with that, if you want to fill out a speaker card for any items that are before us, please do so in the back or one of our remote locations in Van Nuys or San Pedro City Hall, and we'll be sure to hear your comments on items that have not yet had a public hearing, or for general public comment, which is two minutes on items not on today's agenda, but nevertheless on our jurisdiction. So again, this is a second quorum call for council members Wesson, Smith, Rosendahl, Krikorian, and Hahn. If you'll please join us. Thank you for your patience while we await their presence in chamber to establish a quorum. We're waiting three more members to constitute 10 members and a quorum. So our third quorum call for the late council members, council members Hahn, Krikorian, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson. Please join us as soon as possible. Smith, and Wesson. If the sergeants-at-arms could please help us to inquire their whereabouts so we can begin our meeting as soon as possible. Thank you. If we don't constitute a quorum in the next two minutes, we will have to adjourn for lack of a quorum. We are waiting Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Ms. Hahn. There's a final, final quorum call for Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Ms. Hahn. If the sergeants-at-arms will please inquire their whereabouts and report to the chair. Thank you. Thank you. Because the following council members are not here, that's Ms. Han, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Weston. It is after 10:15. We do not have a quorum. I'm still waiting to report as where they are, but it is my inclination to adjourn for lack of a quorum. Again, just as a reminder for everybody, when we are late, we waste not only our colleagues' times, but the public's time. If you do fifteen minutes' times, this crowd, that is hours of people's time. People take off work to be here, and it is critical that council members adhere to their own council rules to be here on time. We have excuses. Ms. Han is here, and we have a quorum. But I will just finish what I'm saying. When we are here at 10:16 or 10:17, that is hours of public time wasted. And I will reiterate a call. And again, if we do not have a quorum at 10:15, we will be adjourning these meetings throughout the year. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alakon Cardenas, Han, Wiza Koretsk, Krikorian, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Roswell, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum. Ms. President.
All right. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Zine seconds without objection. They'll be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Koretsk seconds without objection. They'll be approved as well. Next order of business.
This is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Okay. If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Zine, would you lead us this morning?
And place your hand over your heart. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can run through today's agenda, please.
First item on the agenda, item one, is the Wilshire Center Business Improvement District Ordinance Notice for Public Hearing, and there is a card on that.
Okay. We'll call that special for the card. The next items, please.
Items two through twelve, or items for which public hearings have been held. Item two is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that?
Yes, please. Let's hold item two on the desk. Other items, council members three through twelve. Anybody wishing to call special items three through twelve? Seeing none, if there are no specials for items three through twelve, colleagues, we'll take a vote on those. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Reconsideration on five.
Five, okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration of five. Mr. Smith, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. We'll call that special for you, Mr. Smith. Next items, please.
Items thirteen through thirty, or items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. If there's no objection to consideration, those items are before us.
And Ms. President, there is a request to continue item thirty to February fifth.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing item thirty to the fifth of February on this one?
No. We'll call twenty-eight special.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Yes, Ms. Perry?
Twenty-eight special.
Okay. Ms. Perry, item twenty-eight. Which do we have? Yes, Mr. Reyes? Yeah. Now we have cards on fourteen. What other items do we have cards on, Mr. Clerk?
Items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Okay. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Other specials, colleagues? Let's hold thirteen on the desk until Mr. Rosendahl is here or Mr. Parks arrives after eleven. So we have twelve members for that. Any other specials, colleagues? That's fifteen through twenty-nine. If there are no other specials, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance. And please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. As is our custom, let's go through to item two just before general public comment. That is for our commission appointment. And Jerry Bardwelle, if you'd like to come forward and sit here at the table and like to recognize the vice chair of our Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Smith.
Parks, who is not here at the moment, he asked me to introduce this designate. The committee found him very appropriate. First of all, he has a tremendous background in accounting and pension issues, and he spoke eloquently about his knowledge and his background in the field. We found him to be most acceptable and the kind of person we really need at this point in time. And he's willing to come basically out of retirement to help us do that. He is a great asset to the city of L.A., and we wholeheartedly enthusiastically ask for your support today. So with that, Mr. Bardwelle, would you like to talk a little bit about your background and how you came to be in this position, to fill this position, and then any actions you may have, concerns, ideas about how you would work on the pension board?
The relevant experience that I would quote is that I did serve as the chief accountant for the Lasers Board. I was the cash management officer for the city treasurer's office. I then became the investment officer for the foreign police pension fund. I went from there to be the assistant manager of Lasers, and then on to be the managers of Lasers. I retired from the city and for a brief period was the co-managing director of Amorves Bond Management Company. I was asked by the mayor if I would serve. I agreed to do that, and I'm pleased to do it. I am indeed coming out of retirement to do this. I know that the pension funds are dealing with issues these days. I think I can and should make a contribution, and would be pleased to do so.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your extraordinary service to the people of Los Angeles and the employees of Los Angeles City. With that, if there are no other members on the queue, let's go ahead and take a vote on the nomination. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Welcome aboard commissioner, and thank you very much for your continuing service. If, just before public comment, if we could take one other item out of order, Ms. Perry. We do have a family here on a reward motion. On item twenty-eight, if I could please direct folks' attention to the podium, Ms. Perry will speak on item twenty-eight for Mr. Parks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I didn't want to hold up the agenda. The family's having some difficulty finding parking, so if they come in during the discussion, I'll invite them.
Would you like me to wait for them? We can...
It's fine, because Officer Brady is here.
Okay.
And she can speak to it as well. And I'm doing this on behalf of Mr. Parks, who should be here in just a bit. On January third, 2010, at 11:04 PM, sixty-two-year-old Annette Marie Carter was crossing the street at Normandy Avenue and Adams Boulevard, and she was struck and killed by a car. The hit-and-run driver left the scene northbound on Normandy Avenue. LAPD does have some information, and I'm going to ask Officer Brady to share that with us very quickly, and just ask for your help in supporting Mr. Parks in this $50,000 motion for reward.
Good morning. Unfortunately, the police department has very little information. We have a dark vehicle, possibly black Toyota Camry, that struck Mrs. Carter and left her. Our witnesses that have come forth have very, no license plate was obtained, so we're hoping that by offering a reward, someone will come forth with some information and help us identify the person responsible for this horrific crime.
All right. And again, this crime took place on January the third, 2010, at 11:04 PM at the intersection of Normandy, at or near the intersection of Normandy Avenue and Adams Boulevard. Sixty-two-year-old Annette Marie Carter was hit, and she died of her injuries. This was a hit-and-run crime. So please help us bring these people to justice in her memory. Thank you very much. And if the family comes in later, I'll just introduce them.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. If we can please open the roll on this reward motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forth with without objection. Item thirteen, we have twelve members for now. If we could please prepare the roll on item thirteen and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well. That'll take us back to our general public comment. Again, this is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. If it's, if you're here to speak on one of the items that is later on the agenda, we'd ask you just to change your card over to that. But we have a number of cards here today. Our first speaker is Michael Bakes, sorry, Backes, and then Jim Anderson will follow. Backes? Excuse me if I mispronounce it.
Hi, my name is Michael Backus.
Backus, thank you.
My general comment today is just on SEQA findings. The council has been getting advice that certain things that have been brought before the council recently are exempt from SEQA. I think that you should very, very carefully examine what you're regulating in regards to that specific SEQA finding. I think if the argument could be made that you are asking somebody to dump agricultural chemicals into a water supply, that might in fact qualify as having an environmental impact. I think that it's better to act accordingly now rather than after the city has moved deeper into this issue and be ordered by a court to examine the environmental impact of one of the council's actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Backus. Jim Anderson is our next speaker, to be followed by Stephen Martinez in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Anderson.
Good morning, Jim Anderson, Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council, Area Two representative. I'm here to express a concern that I have developed from my frequent walks and talks with the constituents in and around Woodland Hills, Area Two, and the other areas.
Would you move a little closer to the mic or just move the mic down a little bit?
About increased vigilanteism. And I attribute it to an increasing disconnect between our government and the people. I don't know what you can do about it, but you are the government. But this vigilanteism is taking expression in the form of retribution against sex criminals in our neighborhoods, meth labs, which we've had to disperse ourselves. And while we have a new police presence through the 21st, and it's doing a good job, we still have essentially only two cars on patrol at one time. So my concern is quite simply, based on what I've heard from my constituents in the last several weeks, that you need to do something to bring the government closer to the people. You need to be more aware of and listen to the people's concerns, and you need to develop some sort of method for heading off this increasing vigilanteism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate it. Stephen Martinez is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that is Arnold Sacks back here in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Martinez. Come on forward. Good morning.
Hello. You already know my name. You announced it. But anyhow, I'm just here to speak in behalf of the valley, and these runaway clinics have been popping up all over the place. I really want to give thanks to Jan Perry for her strength and understanding. Her as the only minority woman on that city council who understands the struggles of Latino and African-American mothers knows the danger of these places being popping up like a Starbucks in the valley. So I really urge you to please do your vote today. The valley needs it. We need to have some control, some restrictions, and yet we need to make sure...
Sorry, so are you talking about the medical marijuana issue?
I'm talking about the issue of the valley concerning the medical marijuana, yes.
If you don't mind, I'll put your card in for item fourteen, but this is for general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, so legally...
No problem. I'll wait. Thank you.
I'll make sure it gets in there. Thank you, sir. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker here in council chambers. After that is Sarah Diesel.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. It's refreshing to open up the city council agenda so far this month and not see any special events listed, although the Lakers, Clippers, Yelich Live, and the Kings are still playing. We don't know how much is being spent for city services. Shouldn't that be listed in the agenda? Long Beach is going to consider on their council agenda strategy to restore public access television in Long Beach. Mr. Smith? They're not suing the state, evidently. They're trying to get, they're trying to get public access television back in Long Beach. What's the city council's strategy to do that? I'd like to refer back to last week. There were two items on Friday's agenda that really made my, scratched my head. You had before you a utility maintenance program, item number seven, and Mr. Parks was tuting the greatness of this program, and he asked two questions of the speaker. He asked about an MOU, when it was going to be signed, and he asked about an ordinance that was going to come into effect. And the speaker said, well, the MOU has been in effect for over a year. So how come Mr. Parks didn't know about it? And the ordinance? Well, doesn't the ordinance come before the city council? Wouldn't you be the ones to invoke an ordinance in the city? How come you don't know about it? And Mr. Alakon, you've spoken high praise of the building, Department Building and Safety's appointee, Bud Overham. You were out, you were, you was mentioned that it took four years for a business to get its permits together. I remember seeing in the council, hearing the outrage over the animal control director's job.
Mr. President, he should be directing his comments to the council as a whole.
Yes, if you could please... Excuse me.
Thank you.
I am directing my comments to the whole, but please pay attention. I remember listening to the outrage by the city council regarding the animal control director's job. How come people from the Building and Safety Department weren't brought into the council chambers and asked about making the process for getting licenses easier?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I gave you a little extra time to make sure because of the interruption. Thank you, sir. Sarah Diesel is our next speaker. After that will be Norman Welch. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, council members. My name is Sarah Diesel. I'm a professor of Oaksteram University, and I'm the secretary for GLAC, the Greater Los Angeles Collective's Alliance. It saddens me this morning to hear about the January third accident where a sixty-two-year-old woman was shot, excuse me, was run over by a car and killed. And we focus so much energy and time on what you call criminals, the people out here that are medical marijuana patients. Let's focus our energy and our time and our money in the right and proper places to the real criminals that are doing crack and heroin and speed on Hollywood Boulevard, which is where I live. Liquor stores are popping up everywhere around where I live. I don't drink alcohol. They also sell cigarettes. I don't smoke cigarettes. But I do ingest a lot of THC because it helps give me a good quality of life. So let's please focus today on this ordinance and not just vote on it as a 500-foot or 1,000-foot buffer, because there are a lot of things left in this ordinance, some past versions, that need to be gone through. And I won't go into those now because this is public comment. So please allow us to speak again before number fourteen, before you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diesel. And we will be having public comment on item fourteen. Norman Welch is our next speaker, and after that is Mekhrib Sefu. Good morning.
Other than to, other than to ask that you get to number fourteen as swiftly as possible because there's so many people who are ill here, who will be waiting all day if it takes all day.
We do plan on taking that up first.
I'll defer to later on the comments.
Okay. And do you have a card already in for fourteen? A separate one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mekhrib Sefu is next. After that is Stephen Motuski. Good morning.
Good morning, state councils. My name is, my name is Mekhrib Sefu, and I'm a taxi driver with a yellow car for nineteen years. I have worked at heart for three years, and I own my own taxi. I'm my own boss. I'm here because I want you to know that the organization by the name of Latwa does not represent me or my fellow drivers. They are trying to change the taxi business in a way that will make it hard for real drivers like me to make a good living. Latwa does not know what drivers need. They are out of touch with taxi drivers like me. They doesn't represent me and the fellow drivers. Please, ask the taxi commission to listen to us, the drivers, and not some groups that does not have our support. Again, I urge you, those groups, the few people, they organize themselves, and they are trying to convince the taxi commissioners to the... are trying to convince the Taxi Commissioner to the wrong way, in the wrong direction. So, this is my life. Nineteen years I worked for the city. Nineteen years I don't have any problem except this year. So, all the drivers behind me are respecting the city councils to look this issue seriously. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. There are three other speakers. Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl, there's three other speakers on this. Do you want to hear the other three and then speak again? Okay. So, the next one was Steven Matuski, and then Bilal Kamir.
Good morning, dear city council members. My name is Steven Matusovski, and I'm driving Yellow Cap six-three-three. I started driving cap when I was twenty years old. Now, I'm thirty-six. And the reason why I do, because I really love my job. I enjoy driving cap to be my own boss. On December, and I'm here to speak out because I really concerned about my industry. On December seventeen, other drivers and I attended the Taxi Cap Commission hearing. We tried to speak at the hearing, but the commission would not listen. We wanted, we wanted to them to know that we are independent contractors, and we, we were not represented by an organization called LATWA. LATWA does not represent me. LATWA does not represent my taxi cap fellows. The commission will listen to LATWA, but not us, the real drivers. We deserve to be heard. We demand to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Bilal Kamir is our next speaker. After that is Firus Alam. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. We are, we all are here to say LATWA does not represent us. They come to you guys and they say a bunch of lies that they represent us and they do the things for us. They tell you that they have sixteen hundred members, which is, is absolutely lies, because they were coming to us, collecting signature for something else, and telling you, you know, they are working for us. They do not represent us. They always bothering us. They come to you, a bunch of lies, just a bunch of lies. Please, if you want to know something, let us talk. Respect us, that we tell you, because for the last fifteen years, I've been driving a cap myself. And as you can see, most of the time, we are here by hundreds of people as a fellow cap drivers to tell you that they never ever respecting us, you know, or forging our signatures and tell you a bunch of lies. Mr. Hamid Khan, who's the head of them, he never even drove a cap for one day. How can he come and tell you what we need? Please, listen to us.
Thank you, sir. And then Firus Alam. After that is Jano Yusefi.
Good morning, council member. My name is Firus Alam, and I started my taxi career on back two thousand and four. I started as a taxi driver, and then I bought my own business. Whatever I have in my back home, I sell it and I, I made my own business up here. Now, this here, the problem is the Taxi Com, Taxi Commissioner, they're not listening to us. Now, we are here, I'm here not only for me. I have thousands of drivers and owners. They are all having so much difficulties about this thing, that please, help us. We need help up here about getting these problems done with LATWA. LATWA, they are, don't know what they are talking about. And why a group, a person come over here in our business? We work on this business, and we made our own business, and they are entering in this business and talking about this, even though they don't know what they are talking about? I worked so hard. I worked so many hours, so I, I give everything, my life, for this business, because I find out that this business is good opportunity to be live on. And our company, which is United Chequer Cap, we are very happy with them. Whatever they're doing for us is good for us. And please, help us. It's not only for me, for my drivers, my family, my whole bunch of fellow drivers, owner, they need help. Please, help us.
Thank you, sir. And Jano Yusefi? Or Jano? Yusef, is Jano or Jano Yusefi? Is he here as well?
No.
Oh, sorry. I'm okay. Sorry. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to say something on this?
Mr. President, I'd like to say to all my good friends that are here today, that I totally agree with you, that you need to be part of the process. You need to be engaged in every aspect of it. You were incredibly impressive when we spoke in committee, and when we appointed that new commissioner, who also, you know, came from another country and was here, he showed sensitivity to everybody. And we want to show sensitivity. I'd like to take a little meeting in the back, and let's have a little discussion right now. But most importantly, as this process goes before that Taxi Commission, make sure you're there. It will then come to the committee of the council and to the full council. And we're sympathetic to all points of views, frankly, and we want to do what's right for the cap drivers, because you guys are terrific and you help us all. I want to thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. I'm sorry, we, we actually can't do the back and forth. There's a chance here we could do a brief comment, but I know Mr. Rosendahl will be speaking with you further, and thank you all for being here. John Walsh is our next speaker for our general public comment.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlandsLANDS.org. My father was a cap driver, nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, nineteen fifties. They're doing the wrong thing. They should do what the medical marijuana people is. Pay you off. Campaign contributions. One person here. It takes one person to hand out the checks, and you don't have to show up here if you want to pay them off. HollywoodHighlands.org. And speaking of paying off, the relationship between the mayor and the city council is the lowest it has ever been. He's involved in one thing and one thing only, and it was mentioned in the L.A. Times on Sunday. And if you want to know what's happening, come to my blog, and that is the lengthy divorce proceedings with Corina. And what does that mean with the city? She wants to know how much he's worth. She has hired forensic auditors. He is hiding money. Some of that, and I'll tell you who else is interested in the mayor hiding money in his divorce proceedings. Everybody up here knows it. Every reporter knows it. They won't report it. It's only at HollywoodHighlands.org. And also child custody. And incidentally--
Mr. President, this does not appear to be within the jurisdiction of the city. Mr. Walsh?
There is city money that he has stolen. There is city money. Why is the mayor in a two-and-a-half-year divorce proceedings instead of six months if his wife is not saying in divorce court that he has money? I don't know whether Steven Bing has, has used it. I don't know who is giving this money, who is sheltering his money--
I'm sorry, sir. You'll have to bring it back to the City of Los Angeles. And if I could ask you to not shout so we don't break the equipment. You're not going to be arrested, sir, but if you would please not--
I'm not arrested in this city--
Sir?
For shame!
If you will please not break our microphone. Thank you. Thank you, sir. You are entitled to say--
Arrested!
You're not getting arrested, and we would just ask folks not shout so we don't break the equipment.
Have you ever--
No, you're not being arrested, to be clear. You're sitting back down, and I'm sure you'll be talking on other comments, but we'd ask you respectfully just not to shout so loud that-- Sir? We're getting feedback. It's very loud, and our sound engineers have asked people not to shout, so I will keep consistent with that, and we appreciate your comments this morning. Patricia Mendoza is our next speaker. After that is Luisa Paria-Mavropoulos. And you need a translator? We'll get the interpreter for you. Thank you. Good morning.
Buenos dias, Patricia Mendoza.
Good morning, Patricia Mendoza.
Vivo en la Temple de la Botry.
I live on Temple and Botry.
Por cuarenta y seis años.
For forty-six years.
Y vengo a terminar mi queja.
I come to finish my complaint.
Y le pido hoy al señor Richard Alon, perdón, al señor Alarcon.
I would like to ask Mr. Alarcon--
Que quiero, que le pida a su empleado--
That I want to ask his staff--
Que es un títere--
That is a puppet.
Prieto indio con el opal en la frente--
He's dark and has an opal on his forehead like I do.
Que pare de matratarme, humillarme, y decirme que soy una ignorante y estúpida.
To stop mistreating me and to stop telling me that I am ignorant and stupid.
Por cuatro años he sido miembro del comité del Neighborhood Council.
For four years, I have been a member of the Neighborhood Council.
Y si alguien a mí de la ciudad me hace poner mi mano en la biblia diciendo lo bueno, lo malo, de ser una miembra y ser todo bueno para la comunidad y representarlos, entonces tengo que terminar mi trabajo como una americana ciudadana.
If somebody asks me to put my hand on the Bible and say what is good and bad to be a member, to work for the community, then I will have to end my work as an American citizen.
Y yo tomo mi trabajo en lo que me, yo me comprometo muy serio.
And I take my work with a lot of responsibility.
Y le pido al Garcia hoy por favor--
I ask Mr. Garcia today--
Como no está el irresponsable concejal de nuestra comunidad como siempre.
Our councilman that is so irresponsible is not here present today.
Quiero la disculpa de la muchacha Tori que viene de L.A. Trust Landing, que me faltó el respeto la otra semana.
I want Tori that comes from L.A. Trust Landing to apologize, as she disrespected me last week.
Y el Reyes le pidió y le dio señas que me trataran mal.
And Mr. Reyes asked her to mistreat me. He signaled her to mistreat me.
Tengo pruebas en una cámara.
I have proof in a videotape.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
Mr. Alarcon, would you like to briefly--
I just want to mention for the record that I did consult with a witness who was present at that meeting, and, and she has told me that if anything, Mr. Segala showed astounding restraint, that Mr. Reyes was actually being fraudily challenged by, by the woman who just spoke, and, and that all of a sudden she directed her comments at Jose Segala. And this was not a meeting in my district. This is a meeting on the other side in Councilmember Reyes's office, and Mr. Segala was there because he's the president of a neighborhood council. It had nothing to do with my office. I just wanted to say that for the record. But from witnesses' accounts, he, he actually was very restrained in his actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Luisa Paria-Mavropoulos is our next speaker. After that is Candido Mars. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Ooh, Mr. Alarcon just said, just kind of upset me, because you know what? Mr. Segala is all but nice, cool, calm, and collected. Honestly, you should know who you're hiring. Anyways, Region F, where I live, Greater Echo Park Alesian Neighborhood Council has its elections coming up in March. Nowhere has it been documented, at least that I've seen, that the election closes today. Nowhere have I seen, Mrs. Segala is the chief information officer, and she has failed in her duties to put that information out. So, for people that want to go and register, you can go to http://cityorg.lacity.org/election/ncdoc/website.pdf for Region F. Today is the last day. Also, you just passed a motion, number four, that says if you're a victim of physical illness, disability, or you've been assaulted or whatever, that people make provisions for you for your disabilities. I have been asking for my Neighborhood Council to send me a doggone agenda in the mail, because I can't get to their posting sites. There's times where I can't even get out of bed to get on my computer. And also, just so you know, I received a letter from SSI saying that I do have sight impairment. Have they done it yet? No. I have submitted at least fifteen complaints, and I've not heard one word from Dunn. I brought the papers here to you for you council people to look at. No one's ever called me, done anything, or said anything about it. Like I said, I filed one against Bang Wong Kim. No one's called me on that one either. And really, what is the big secret? What is the big hoo-ha?
Thank you very much.
Really want to know.
Candido Mars is our next speaker. After that is Robert Hodge.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. This is going to be a great year. I experienced a miracle over here. Mr. Weezer, I saw Mr. Weezer and Mr. Michael Corion speaking. Can you imagine that? Two individuals that were having problems in the community were on the sideline talking about those problems and trying to resolve them. Mr. Kardinas, there's hope for you and I someday. Boy, I'll tell you, I think we can, we can work things out. But Mr. Corion, I want to welcome you, and we look forward to working with you. I'm on loan to the sixth district from the twelfth district, and I spend a lot of time in your area, and I look forward to working with you and the community activists in your area. Today, I'm here to invite all members, everyone, to the meeting up on the tenth floor for the Consolidated Plan. The Consolidated Plan has to deal with the federal funding that the city receives. There are four block grants. It has to deal with housing, community, and economical development. When I started here back in nineteen ninety-one, the main issue was gang and community issues. Today, it's financial. We are in a crisis. I believe we have the ability and the talent here, Mr. President, to deal with that. Do we have the desire? I hope that you'll stay focused and that we'll work this out so that next year, God willing, we're all here and that we can look back and say that we, we achieved great things this coming year. If Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corion can do that on the side, the rest of us can get together and work together. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Candido. Appreciate it. Robert Hodge is our next speaker, and then Michael Corion. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Little lesson, little growing lesson for the city council. It takes three to four months to grow a marijuana plant. April through October is the only time of the year you can grow it here outside. So, you might get two harvests a year if you're lucky. To know the outcome of how much marijuana you will harvest out of your garden is almost impossible. If something happens to your garden, you're out of luck. You get less than you need or none at all. Like growing a tomato, do you want your tomato today or maybe in three or four months? That's why we buy our tomatoes at the store and not grow them in our backyards. It's easier to go to the store and buy one. Same with marijuana. It's easier to go to the clutches and buy it. Patients need safe and easy--
Sorry, sir. Since you're talking about the marijuana issue, do you mind if I put your card in on item fourteen instead of general public comment?
I'm giving you a growing lesson. That's it. And another side note, I hope one of you knows CPR, because poor Johnny back there's going to collapse on this floor of a heart attack, and one of you is going to have to save him.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Michael Corion is our next speaker, and after that is Cheryl Eickley. Good morning, sir.
Morning. Where is Michael Corion? And I had a couple of questions. The city attorney says people cannot stand up here and moan support. Yet, the taxi drivers came in and they all stood here. Now, you want to know why you get upset? This city has double standards. They came in with a T-shirt that said, "Respect me." That's all we wanted, respect. But you treat us as if we were criminals in a third-world country. Mr. Reyes, people are speaking here. He's not even here.
Please, yeah.
I'm speaking of Mr. Reyes, not to Mr. Reyes.
My fault. You're correct.
Okay, good. Glad you admitted that. Once again, Mr. Reyes isn't even in the room.
He's right here, sir.
People are talking about conversations they had. Mr. Reyes doesn't have the courtesy to clean up property. I've been here for four months already asking for the property to be cleaned, and he hasn't did it. So, here I am today, asking the city council what to do. Mr. Kardinas seems to be upset. He seems to always be up in the Kool-Aid, not know the flavor. He's always in everybody else's business except his.
Sir, if you could make items, comments that aren't of a personal nature.
I will.
Thank you.
If Mr. Cardenas starts taking care of the business in the community, maybe kids won't be dying in his community. But they're not, because he's too busy about everybody else's problems. I'm upset because I've been here for four months asking the city council and Mr. Cardenas to clean up property up, but ego and pride gets in the way and he won't. If a woman came here and asked for a liquor license, he would. Now the gestures are going back. Let me ask you, what do I have to do? Hire a prostitute for Mr. Reyes to listen to me?
All right, sir, you're now...
That's a question!
You've been warned about...
He only seems to listen to women.
If you can please turn the microphone off for a second. Sir, you've been warned. I will go over for everybody, the code of conduct is... You can give any ideas that you have. You can have... It's not an idea, sir. I want to be very specific with you right here. The rules and the code of conduct, yes, Ms. Perry? Did you want to?
Unless I'm hallucinating, I'm looking at Mr. Reyes, and I just wanted to say that for the record. He's sitting to my left and he's been...
Thank you for that clarification.
Just want to put it on the record.
Sir, if you would please... Persons addressing the council should not make personal, slanderous, or profane remarks about any member of the council. Sir? That is your second and last warning. So if you... That is your second and last warning. We'll give you the balance of your time, but that will be your last warning.
So I come here often to ask why this property won't be cleaned. It's still not cleaned. You got rats living in it. When the rains come, the rats go into everybody else's property. If this happened next to his house, I guarantee you his wife would not stand for that.
Thank you, sir.
His kids would not have to deal with a rat-infested community.
Thank you for your comments today. Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to... I just wanted to take the opportunity to clarify. It's unfair to Mr. Reyes that he's sitting right there. Mr. Corion knew he was sitting right there, and he said over and over and over that he's not here. Unfortunately, people watching on the television could only see Mr. Corion speaking, and they couldn't see that Mr. Reyes was in fact at his seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Cheryl Ickley is our next speaker. After that is James Shaw. Good morning.
Thank you. I'm happy to join with you today in what will go down in history as just another demonstration of freedom in the history of our city. Forty-seven years ago, a great American in whose symbolic shadows we stand today gave a timely speech on freedom and equality. This momentous decree came as a great beacon light of hope to millions of minorities who had been seared in the flames of withering injustice. That speech came as a joyous daybreak to renewed... The renewed beginning towards yet still a more perfect union. But since 1996, there are still Americans who are not free. Thirteen years later, the lives of medical cannabis patients and providers are sadly crippled by the manacles of the government's war on cannabis and the chains of injustice. Thirteen years later, the medical cannabis patient lives on a lonely island of intimidation in the midst of vast ocean of so-called freedoms. Thirteen years later, the medical cannabis patient still languishes in all corners of our government and finds himself exile in his own city. And so we've come here today to dramatize a contemporary and still shameful injustice in a sense we've come to call upon our government to cash a check. When the architects of our republic wrote a magnificent... The magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence on hemp paper, they were signing a promissory note to which every American was to fall heir. This note was a promise that all humans, yes, medical cannabis patients as well as healthy people, would be guaranteed the unable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is obvious that today our government has defaulted on this promissory note insofar as her citizens of cannabis are concerned. Instead of honoring the sacred obligation Los Angeles has given... Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. You can always finish your sentence, don't worry. James Shaw is our last speaker on general public comment. Good morning, Mr. Shaw.
Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, city councilmembers. My name is James Shaw. I'm with the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients. And what I wanted to speak to briefly here at public comment is just a little bit about big business versus community and culture. In 2007, landlord letters were sent to the landlords of patient associations. And those landlord letters threatened the landlord with imprisonment and fines if he didn't evict the community that was established in his business location. And there was an opportunity at that time for the city to do something about that. And what continued to happen was that LAPD continued to do raids on patient associations. And our organization defended about... Defended about twenty different organizations in court. Some we lost, some we won. The organizations that were allowed to stay continue there today. The organizations that didn't allow went underground and reestablished as patient associations not in the public eye. And today, there's an opportunity for... And every day, at every city council meeting, there's an opportunity for city councils to consider whether they're supporting big business or community and culture. And what we have around Los Angeles is a lot of patient associations that are about community. Carmen Trutanich had it right when he said that it's about collective cultivation. He had that part right, and he had a lot of things right. And I'd like us to reflect on that when we're considering how we're dealing with medical cannabis patient associations, because it is a lot about community and culture.
Mr. President, this item is on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Pearman in Van Nuys. My apologies, Donna, we didn't have you for this, for general public comment, for item fourteen. Did you want to card in on both?
Yeah, I wanted on both.
Okay. So go ahead and speak on public comment.
Oh, okay.
My apologies, and then we'll keep you in there for number fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, it's wrong to want any more concessions from the public employees. That's what I want to talk about. It's having to give up their cost of living is exactly a pay cut in itself. The city employees have given enough of no cost of living. Yet the cost of living still goes up. They still need money for food and rent, housing payments, sending their kids to school. City employees have done their part helping the city. Let's go after someone else. City employees need to stand up like the local eighteen. They need to stand up and say, "No more concessions." They want to hurt the middle class. It's a hypocrisy when some of the council, like Parks, can get a seven-figure retirement. I don't agree with people who make a seven-figure retirement. Most of city public employees average thirty-five thousand a year from retirement. That's nothing. I'm also against the international gun ban. They want to take away the right to own guns. That's going to affect Los Angeles. They want to get rid of the middle class. They want... We want to have two classes, poor and the bourgeois. That's why they want to hurt the average to low-middle-class city employees. And also about the taxi workers. They're also hard-working employees. Yet the city council wants to overspend, giving the most needed money to the CRA rail projects that are running in Los Angeles into debt. You move the middle class into the lower class, who will have to pay in handouts. Let the people earn it with hard-earned cost of living. Reward the most concessions with rewards. And as I said, inclusive taxi workers, the lower, the middle, the lower-middle class. Let's stop them from going after the working class. We need to let the city employees... They work hard for it, and it's much rather better for them to earn a living rather than having to give in handouts like food stamps. So remember, they work hard for it, and let's not listen to the unemployed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. That'll close our general public comment. Mr. Reyes, did you... I'm sorry, I just saw you on the cue. Did you want to say something earlier? That will take us to the items that have been called special. I'd like to recognize, Ms. Perry, I know that you... There's some family members that were here on the reward motion from earlier. If we could just reconsider that item real quick so that we can hear from the family members. If we can please open the roll on twenty-eight, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that is back before us. Thank you very much for your patience while we went through general public comment to the members of the family that are here. We appreciate your presence very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your kindness, Mr. President. And again, I'm doing this on behalf of Mr. Parks. I have with me today Murfit Carter-Kyles. She is the daughter of our victim. Andra Kyles, Mrs. Carter's son-in-law, and Ashley Johnson, the granddaughter of Mrs. Carter. And I would ask her daughter to just say a few words about her mother in asking for her help.
Hello, my name is Murfit Carter-Kyles. My mother was a wonderful person who was killed in a hit-and-run driver on January third, 2010. I am very hurt and distraught about this matter, but I hope that her killer can be found, and I would like to thank everyone who assisted in this matter.
Hello, I'm Ashley Johnson. I'm the victim's granddaughter, and unfortunately, my grandmother was taken from me on January third due to a hit-and-run driver. And I just wish you guys would find the person and just make stricter enforcement so matters like this do happen, people know you can't get away with it. Because I feel that it's too easy to get away with things like this from watching the news. You see people get hit and ran over all the time, and it's just like they're nothing. So just make things more stricter so you can find these people, so they can stop doing this.
Hello. I thank you very much for the things that you have done and to support us each and every way. We do have one issue about the cameras that should be places that this incident did happen early last year. Three individuals got hurt, didn't die, but they got hurt. And at this location, it's too easy, too close to the freeway for someone to jump on and jump off, just like a bank robbery. It's just a jump on and jump off, you know? Can you please, please enforce this law a little bit more? And if y'all can't kiss the ones, we would appreciate it. You know, it's like they said, there's two laws in this world. There's man's law and there's God's law. You might get away with the man's law, but God's law is right there. So hopefully in due time, time will tell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. President. Letting the family speak.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And I know on behalf of Mr. Parks as well, thank you again to the family members for taking time to be here today. If we can please open the roll again on the reward motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved again. We'll send that so forth with... If we can move to item fourteen to take that out of order, I know a lot of people are here. We have Mr. Reyes. We have so far forty-five cards on it. Should we hear the card at the outset? Okay. All right. We'll set then the clock for a minute per speaker. We have Stephen Martinez is the very first speaker, just doing these in the orders that we have received them. Barry Kramer will be after that, and then Oliver Summers. Those are our first three speakers. Mr. Martinez is in Van Nuys, so we'll go there first for the first speaker. Good morning, good sir.
Again, good morning and thank you for your time. I'm just going to finish up. I've held a lot of phone calls and conversations throughout the community, and we do know that there needs to be some restrictions voted on. We need to bring protection to our communities. You can call the local schools of these, they'll tell you the situation that some of these clinics have brought to our community. But most of all, it pains me to know that some people, some profiteers, took advantage, took totally advantage of some of those suffering that need that prescription. So I really urge the city council that we need to move forward. We need to have a vote. And I really, really love the way Jan Perry, the councilmember who stood her ground on some issues here, and that needs to be done. I've talked to plenty of mothers, plenty of parent centers who say, "What are we waiting for? Our teenage, our youth, people are sitting there suffering them, and we need to end that." And that's it. And you know, as for these quiet doctors, I mean, we need to get some real doctors giving out these prescriptions for those patients and not those that take advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you so much for your patience earlier as well. Barry Kramer is our next speaker. Oliver Summers will follow. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barry Kramer. I'm a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm a medical marijuana patient, and I am an operator of one of the one hundred and eighty-seven original dispensing collectives that are registered with the city. I'd like to take issue with just one sentence in the upcoming draft ordinance that you're going to be addressing today, and that is something that our councilman, Councilman Carretts, talked about last week, and that's the alleyway, adjacent to an alleyway of residential area. In Hollywood, according to the map that we were given last week, in Hollywood there were four dispensing collective that were allowed to remain where they were. If you put in the alleyway line, they're all gone. And Hollywood, and to be able to move in Hollywood, there's nowhere that we would be able to move on that map because those four locations were one of the only four locations that were allowed. There's nowhere to move because everything is against the alley of a residential area. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Oliver Summers. And after that is Yamaleth Bolanos. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys? You know, I'm standing up here so much, I'm starting to feel like one of the regulars, except I use medical cannabis, so therefore my arms aren't flying around and things like that. I just want to say that, I said it last week, and I want to say it again, we really have to start thinking long-term and not necessarily short-term. Everybody here is talking about our sensitive use areas and things like that. Once the sensitive use areas are in place, we're not going to see the proliferation of all the collectives that is bothering all the neighborhoods as we know it. We won't be seeing the giant green crosses, we won't be seeing the cannabis leaves in the window. And basically, what you'll see is responsible operators doing things the way we've been doing it since 2005, the way you guys helped us set up the medical cannabis community. So I just want to say that before you start thinking about this residential issues and things like that, think about the effects of these sensitive uses, how they're going to affect your neighborhood to begin with. Once you add in that residential thing, you're just going to cause them problems, lawsuits, and quite frankly, we're all going to be here for another five years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Yamaleth Bolanos. After that is Michael Bakas.
Hello. I have a letter here that I'd like to distribute to all of you here. I emailed it yesterday to you, but I want to make sure that you guys got it. Okay. Four years ago, I came and asked you all to please give us an ordinance. We've been coming here to ask for that ordinance for four years now, and I have so glad that four years later, finally, we're at this point. I opened up my collective to all of you and to the city attorney's office. We're not scared for you guys to come in. We wanted to show you how well-regulated operation, you know, is very responsible and can be an asset to the community. And I'm an asset to my community. There's a lot more just like me. I'm here to ask you guys today very humbly and very respectfully to please don't be so restrictive in this ordinance that you're going to cut off safe access. I'm asking you to please consider a variance or an exception or exemption for those of us that have acted correctly and have followed the law and have shown you all how it's done. I believe if you guys had done an ordinance already, you guys would have known that already because all the other places would be gone.
Thank you, Yamaleth Bolanos. Thank you very much.
It's the right thing to do for the city, it's the right thing to do for the patients. Please do the right thing.
My next speaker is Michael Bakas. Thank you. After Mr. Bakas is William Rusboson.
Thank you.
After that is William Rusboson, and then Jamie Green. Good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Michael Bakas. I'm on the board of Cornerstone Research Collective, a nonprofit California corporation. There's one big remaining issue with the ordinance as it stands. Please let registered collectives within a community plan area have priority for that community plan area based on when they registered pre-Ico. The current ordinance will likely force us to move out of our plan area. Our six hundred members should not be forced to travel up to thirty miles to get to their collective. Please realize that this ordinance could be moving us from Eagle Rock all the way down to the LA Harbor. Collectives should not be forced to move from their community plan area if the number of pre-Ico collectives in that plan area does not exceed the one collective per fifty-seven thousand residents per Mr. Weezer's prior amendment. Please recognize this problem and please fix it. And by the way, thanks for getting us this far.
Thank you, sir. William Rusboson is next, and then after that is Jamie Green. After Jamie Green is Kim Neverman.
Russ Boson.
Russ Boson, I'm sorry.
William Russ Boson, and thank you. I'm here, I'm a medical marijuana patient also. It's the first time I said it on the microphone, you know? My friend said to me, "Bill, what are you talking about? You didn't say anything about marijuana." You know, it's opening that door, boss. I'm probably going to lose some friends over this, and you know, it's just a little disturbing to me, you know? It shouldn't be that way. And you know, I have a lot of friends that have already passed away, and they could have used some puffs, you know? They could have used some medicine other than what they had, and maybe they would be alive, maybe they'd be with me today. And I heard somebody, I heard somebody say something about double standards, you know? And I see a lot of that, and it's confusing to me, you know? This whole thing is confusing to me. And you know, I don't understand why we're here. I mean, I voted for the, you know, for the medical marijuana use of Compassionate Act, and I thought it would be okay. and I thought it would be okay and I wasn't, I didn't need it at that time until recently, until I got real sick and that's when I needed it. And now I'm thinking, oh my, you're taking the care away, you know. So thanks for your time and please vote with your conscience.
Thank you, Mr. Russ Boson. Appreciate it. Jamie Green is our next speaker. After Mr. Green is Kim Neverman, and then we'll go back to the Valley and Melody Carroll in Van Nuys is our next speaker after that. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, counsel. I'm Jamie Green, a seventy-five-year-old medical marijuana patient who is dying of prostate cancer. I've sat through these meetings for the past four years, waiting for you folks to do what's right. The Compassionate Care Act 420 declares that I should be able to get my medicine in my neighborhood. I am incapable of going to another area. I need and I want, and the law says, that I get it where I live, not off in some other place. The other footnote to all this is, the four years that I've been here listening to you folks talk, I've determined that we really need to worry about who sits on the city council. We are patients, voters. You have mobilized us to vote and to organize voting. We're going to be there in these next elections.
Kim Neverman is our next speaker. And after Ms. Neverman. After, after Mr. Neverman is Melody Carroll in the Valley and then Richard Eastman back here in Chambers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, counsel. I've often had a funny question all the while that this has been going on and an observation, none of this ordinance was really written by this body. This ordinance is a conglomeration from the Three Stooges at the city attorney's office, driven, none other probably than by Steve Cooley at the county and other organizations that are against us. The city council should've been the ones that wrote it, not the city attorney. You know, and I feel so sorry for that family of the hit-and-run, but I'd like to be willing to make a bet that the person that did that hit-and-run bought liquor from a bar next to a house or a liquor store next to a house, or better yet, even across from a school. So, before you condemn us, I don't see too many hit-and-runs caused by people using medical marijuana. Think about it, give us our access.
Next we'll be out in Van Nuys and Melody Carroll is our next speaker in Van Nuys and then Richard Eastman here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Carroll.
Good morning. If you cut the collectives back to seventy and then ninety percent of them have to move, please tell the patients how they are supposed to obtain their medication. So you punish the patients to only be affiliated with one collective, then you move that collective to an industrial area with no public transportation. Also, this collective must have an unarmed guard that can't even have a taser and must guard a two-block area. Plus, it is noted that the patients must now have a state card. The physician's prescription or recommendations cost a couple of hundred dollars, as does the state card. Both have to be renewed every year, and the state card is not required by the state. The only persons, the only people that are going to be okay with this are the attorneys. The lines will be forming to bring lawsuits against this city. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Eastman is our next speaker and then Sarah Armstrong will follow.
Distinguished city council citizens of Los Angeles, Richard Eastman, former HIV/AIDS Commissioner, County of Los Angeles, longtime AIDS survivor, fourteen years, founder of medical marijuana here in Los Angeles. I'm standing here representing all these patients, namely Jaime Green, all the senior citizens that couldn't come here in their wheelchairs, and when we passed this law and I went to Washington, D.C. and met with Nancy Pelosi, Senior Counsel, we asked for rescheduling of marijuana as a medicine. And President Barack Obama can maybe change whatever rulings you do in the upcoming future, but I'm urging you to make sure that the good dispensaries are allowed to stay open, the good patients are allowed to get their medicine, and I don't have to come back here another fourteen years. I'm living with AIDS since nineteen ninety-four, fighting for a simple plan that has helped save my friends, and we expect you, as our elected representatives, to respect the law voted by the people of California in nineteen ninety-six.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Thank you. Sarah Armstrong is our next speaker. After Sarah Armstrong will be Norman Welch and after that is Don Duncan. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Sarah Armstrong, founding member of the working group. Yesterday, Yami and I faxed, wrote, emailed you, asking for a way via a ordinance, variance or exception, which would allow individual council members to decide who stays in dispensaries that are located in sensitive use areas. We believe, looking at the maps and thinking about it, that whether or not you enact a five-hundred or a thousand-foot barrier, this combined with the expanded sensitive use will have a terrible effect. In such a situation where you have people like Yami, who even, by the way, Fox News can't find anything wrong with, they went around her neighborhood, tried to find somebody who objected to her or even knew she was there, couldn't do it, it seems to me that the individual council members could work with the sensitive use dispensaries to find those who might stay and keep us going until we can get everything sorted and straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Norman Welch is next. After Mr. Welch will be Don Duncan and then Barbara Monahan Burke.
Hi. First of all, I'll point a technical order. It's not feedback in the speakers. There's a blown speaker here. You need to replace a speaker. That way, people can speak as loud as they want and all you'd have to do is turn them down and they'd still be heard. My point is that obviously the city attorney's office is working across purposes to some of the council people, so what I would ask is, before you make another move, appoint a special counsel, someone who will not have a vested interest and someone who will be looking at it even-handed instead of, it's almost as if I went to someone with a legal issue and suddenly they were siding with the other side. The city attorney's supposed to be the attorney of the city, not the attorney of the opposition to the patients. So please consider a special counsel. And by the way, if you're gonna have a panel, let me recommend someone like Bruce Margolin who's familiar with cannabis.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Don Duncan is our next speaker, Barbara Monahan Burke, and then back to the Valley and Donna Pearman.
Good morning, council members. My name is Don Duncan, a resident of Los Angeles and the California Director for Americans for Safe Access, and I wanna thank you for your continuing diligence in writing regulations. I hope that you have had a chance to review some of the communication I've sent to you recently about some of the remaining improvements we need to make before adopting this ordinance. I'm sure you saw this weekend Chief Beck making reference to medical marijuana dispensaries and reiterating what he told the Plum Committee, that medical marijuana dispensaries are not magnets for crime. Where there are problems, of course, they need to be corrected and our experience and our research shows that regulations will help do that, but you do not have to adopt the most onerous possible restrictions on collectives in order to achieve that effect. And so I hope you will give very serious consideration to the combination of large buffer zones and the restrictions on abutting residential housing. I hope you'll also give some consideration to the proposal to establish a good neighbor exception for those collectives that have a proven track record of being good neighbors in their community. There's still time to make these changes, so in your final debates today, I hope you'll give that consideration and do those things for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Barbara Monahan Burke. And then, as I mentioned, Donna Pearman will follow in Van Nuys and then back here in Chambers, Arnold Sacks. Good morning.
Barbara Monahan Burke, representing Studio City Neighborhood Council Board. We again ask you to support the proposal for medical marijuana collectives to be located at least a thousand feet from sensitive uses such as schools and churches and to be located at least five hundred feet from residences. We oppose the proposal for collectives to merely not abut residences. We support the proposal for an initial cap of seventy medical marijuana collectives. Yes, many originally permitted collectives will have to move to spread those collectives throughout the city, but they will be able to continue their onsite production collectives and provide leadership within the bounds of this implementation ordinance. A lot of neighborhood councils will probably not be here to speak today because this has gone on for so many hearings, but I want you to remember how they want to protect their communities also. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Our next speaker is Donna Pearman in Van Nuys. Arnold Sacks here and after him will be Sarah Diesel.
Okay, thank you. Hello. What you need to put down is too much of this, but I need to tell the marijuana people that to solve it, you need to be reasonable. Let's make sure that under eighteen do not get marijuana and the marijuana must be away from the houses. Yeah, so let's, yes, and we can include liquor stores away from houses too. CRA wants to have these marijuana places so they can spread eminent domain to the residential areas, because right now they can only do it in business, they can't do it in residential areas. So this is a big boon for the CRA, so they can pretend it's blight. This is how they're gonna do it. I do not want our neighborhoods changed to accommodate only the marijuana. I'm sure there are collectors, I'm sure there are collectors away from houses that can take care of, take care of these, the people on marijuana. Otherwise, you will find the city council basically destroying medical marijuana, so I believe you both need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearman. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, then Sarah Diesel, and then we'll go back to, I'm sorry, we'll stay here and Gary Hiller will be next.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Two people had it right. One said there'll be nothing but litigation, and that's the key here, litigation. Where was the city, how was the city, what is the city doing to clarify the state laws? People are complaining about what the DA is doing, but the state laws say sales are not allowed. Clarify the state laws, get Jerry Brown to clarify what the intentions of the state legislature were when they initiated the marijuana referendum, and it would clarify part of the problem. But litigation is the foundation for any good city, especially like L.A. And as far as time, four years, that's nothing. This is from an article in the L.A. Times. From nineteen seventy, the mid-seventies, the city has been fighting the billboard companies. So marijuana, got another thirty years.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Sarah Diesel is our next speaker and then Gary Hiller.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, council members. Sarah Diesel again, professor of Oakford University and secretary for the Greater Los Angeles Collectives Alliance. Like I said in my public comments, there are things that you folks need to look at before you make your vote today. This is not just ordinance A and B, five-hundred-foot, thousand-foot. For instance, on page twelve, number ten, it does say that the patients still need to participate in the cultivation process. This is an unreasonable request. It also says that the collective will become null and void, their registration, if they do not grow more than nine, over ninety-day period. This is also an unreasonable request. I move that you do not require all the patients to cultivate the cannabis onsite, and I also move that you do not make them grow at all onsite. Page nine starts to go into the null and void, please check that out as well, it's letter K. Also, the pesticide testing, this is a catch-22 for us. It's almost like back in the prohibition days with the tax cannabis stamp. It's unreasonable. It's unfortunate because there are no certified-tested places or laboratories. There is only one that we know of up north in Oakland. My apologies and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Diesel. Gary Hiller is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh and then Brad Barner.
There are at least two instances where the current draft does not reflect the will of this body. First, with respect to the pre-Ico filing deadline, that deadline was 5:00 P.M. on November thirteenth, two thousand and seven. However, because of a drafting error, the current draft says it must have been made before November twelfth, meeting November eleventh, two thousand and seven. That's two calendar days, and there are collectives in the city who in fact filed on the twelfth and thirteenth, who in fact would not get their protection under the ordinance unless that change is made. Number two, as Sarah just pointed out, this council rejected a requirement for onsite cultivation. However, the current draft in fact still requires it because it can only distribute to members that cultivate at or upon the location of the collective. Those last eight words, "at or upon" the location of the collective, can only be read as requiring onsite cultivation, a policy that you voted against. If those words stay in and are enforced, this ordinance will strangulate rather than merely regulate safe access. Thank you for your courtesy and attention to these drafting matters today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. John Walsh is our next speaker and then Brad Barner, oh, sorry, Barnes, not Barner, and then Jennifer Soares. Good morning again.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, you wanna see who the typical, you know, you see how people here in wheelchairs, but who is, who's making the money? Who are the real customers? You get that? You see the picture in their head? You see the woman in the bikini? Does she look like she's dying of AIDS? No, this is profiteering. Look, take a good look at who you want. There she is, Miss Pot, two thousand and ten. And if you wanna go to the Pot Fest, it's coming up, the Hemp Fest sponsored by L.A. Weekly. This is a good ordinance. Alacan and Cardenas and Weezer did an excellent job, but we know what they wanna do to Weezer, recall them. It's right here. They're gonna go after them. They've got millions of dollars and all these white boys are gonna be going after the Mexicans because this is race about it and all the Mexicans are against Pot.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Brad Barnes is our next speaker and then Jennifer Soares and then Kristin Yoder.
Good morning, counsel. I just wanna go over the same thing that we've just heard about the cultivation onsite. This is gonna be a problem under registration, item K, and that word cultivation needs to be switched to a collective instead of that. And also, under conditions of operation, the camera recording is for ninety days. That's very excessive and I think it should be changed maybe seven days if there was an incident. I'm sure that the incident can be burned and recorded and saved, but a ninety-day recording is just ridiculous. Number five also, if you're gonna reduce it down to seventy, then the hours of operation I think should be extended beyond ten o'clock. That way, that way patients can get in. Two o'clock might be a better solution there on that one. Item number ten, under the same operations cultivation, again, it should be who members are part of the collective, should be able to grow, it shouldn't be onsite. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Soares is our next speaker and then Kristin Yoder, then we'll go back to Van Nuys and George Sanchez.
Distinguished council members, my name is Jennifer Soares and I'm here today to express
my gratitude to you and ask you to put an end to this eternal discussion. There was a time that I was appalled by the blatant lack of compassion and legal soundness in this ordinance, but a few months ago, after being sworn in as one of less than three hundred attorneys in California under twenty-six, I had a change of heart. Who cares if there are seriously ill patients that need safe and affordable access to medication that makes their lives bearable? I'm an attorney now, so I'm looking out for number one, which is why I'm asking you, imploring you, to rush this ordinance through without more lengthy and redundant discussion because seriously, I would love to get a big lawsuit under my belt before I turn twenty-six. And it would be so great to make a name for myself this early in my career and get my lovely face on television as much as the city attorney and many of you have been, not to mention the money. I mean, do you know how much a lawsuit costs? I could certainly use a nice little settlement to help me out there. So can you all do me a solid favor and pass this ordinance today so that I can get to work on the city?
Thank you, Ms. Soares. Congratulations on your education and your credentials. Kristin Yoder is our next speaker. After that is George Sanchez in Van Nuys and then back here and Pamela Tropin.
Hi, I'd like to say that I'm proud to have Rosamund as my council member and my name is Kristin. I manage the first legal collective of the one eighty-six to have a business license. We have been quietly operating since two thousand and five in Venice. We have never advertised. We operate solely on word of mouth and are nonprofit. We've had the same staff of volunteers from the beginning. They've been vetted, possess a legitimate doctor's letter and are very knowledgeable of the various medicinal applications of marijuana. The removal of the hardship exemption created a hardship for us and our patients. Our landlord raised our rent from twenty-five hundred to seventy-six hundred, knowing we couldn't move. It will be too difficult to track whether a patient is a member of one or more collectives as well. The point of a collective growing its own medicine is to ensure that there are no pesticides or other chemicals. The FDA stopped testing our produce one year ago. We personally monitor all growers when our collectives and all information is available on the wall for our patients to see. We have operated by the book before the book is written.
Thank you very much, ma'am. George Sanchez is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After Mr. Sanchez will be Pamela Tropin and then Andrew Riddell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In nine places of the ordinance, you have it written, qualified patient, person with identification card. Now, if you keep that written, any law enforcement agency that wants to arrest a legal marijuana, medical marijuana patient, all they have to say is you don't have their proper identification card and off to jail you go. And we as a community already have enough problems with police agencies who don't have respect California state laws in regards to California State Senate Bill four-twenty and Proposition two fifteen. In section eleven, three sixty-two point five of the California State Health and Sealed Code, it states that a qualified patient need not possess an identification card in order to claim the protections afforded by that section of the state law. Now, second thing I'm gonna bring up real quick is that you're gonna have a complete invasion of our privacy when you let the police officers come in and record our names and addresses at any point in time without a subpoena. Now, you don't do that with pharmacies or doctors' offices or anyplace else, should be no exception with us. And the last thing I say is, it amazes me that one of the people making this important decision is under investigation by the DA's office right now. Maybe you should wait a while.
Thank you very much, sir. Pamela Tropin is our next speaker. After Ms. Tropin is Andrew Riddell and Louisa Marropolis.
Good morning. I'm Pamela Tropin and I'm age fifty-one and I've, a stage-four breast cancer patient and with brain metastases and I'm no longer able to drive and I have a collective that And I have a collective that is in my neighborhood, and it's important to me to be able to walk to this. And they always treat with respect and dignity and compassion, and I think it's important to make sure that we continue to have these types of collectives open for people in their neighborhoods so they have access to them. Personally, I've never been a drinker, and I don't understand why marijuana is such a big thing with this older generation. There's no damage to the people. I've always been a productive person. I've worked in law firms for over 30 years, the same law firm, and I'm no longer able to work because of my cancer. And I'd like to have a nice life with what's left of it and be able to go to my collective and be able to get my medicine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for being here as well. Andrew Raydell is our next speaker. After Mr. Raydell is Ms. Mavropoulos, and then Tarek Tavsh.
Thank you. Crime's been going down—I'm sorry—crime's been going down since 1996, since the dispensaries had been around. We're concerned about what is happening with legal marijuana. Now it sounds what you want to do is push this underground and start to open up places in residential areas that are going to be doing illegal weed. I don't understand what the concept is behind that. If we have all of these dispensaries that you can actually see, and they're in public areas, we know where this is coming from. You have a chance to see what product is out there. If you push it back underground, you're doing no service to the community. You're just going to raise the crime rates. Doesn't seem to make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Mavropoulos, and then Tarek Tavsh, and Kevin Glenn.
I was watching the Sundance Channel the other night, and there was a documentary called Grass that was voiced by Woody Harrelson. And it showed that in 1914, they passed an act called the El Paso Act in 1914. According to what I heard, it was a way not to control marijuana, but to control the Mexicans that were coming over across the border, which people didn't like. These people that are here right now, they don't understand. What if it was your family member that all of a sudden got sick, and you went out there and you did your research on the computer, and you found that medical marijuana helped your family member get better? If not get better, at least alleviated some of those symptoms. Would you not be going out there trying to seek it for yourself, for your family member? Yes, you would if you loved that family member. You would be out there looking for it actively. And what are you going to do? You're going to put it 1,000-plus feet away where even you can't find it.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Tarek Tavsh is our next speaker, then Kevin Glenn, and then Matthew Cohen.
On behalf of the responsible original operators of the city, we support the shortest possible distance for sensitive uses. If this ordinance works the way we write it, it won't matter where these stores are located. Responsible operators should be allowed to stay where they are if they've developed or cultivated a relationship with their community and have become an asset, and if they can prove that to their councilmen and through their neighborhood council and local law enforcement. The back alley thing is a problem. Patients like the convenience of not having to travel very far to get this medicine. It's already—it's already a pain to get it. Why make it even harder? With security and lighting and a lot of these other operating restrictions, these stores should not be a nuisance to their neighbors, but an actual asset or benefit to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Glenn is next. After Mr. Glenn is Matthew Cohen, and then Daniel Sosa.
Yes, good morning, council. My name is Kevin Glenn. I'm a member of the Miracle Mile Residents Association and the Mid-City West Neighborhood Council. On behalf of these organizations, we insist on a 1,000-foot barrier, buffer zone between these operations and our—to protect our neighborhoods, our homes, churches, and particularly our children. We consider these operations to be sort of like Trojan horses of crime, delinquency, and blight in our neighborhoods. We have noticed an uptick in crime in our neighborhood, and we're greatly concerned about this. Also, as a teacher for the LAUSD for the last 23 years, as I said before, if you think it's hard teaching teenagers when they're sober, you just try to teach teenagers when they're high. We have enough problems here in the LAUSD. We have an obesity epidemic. Now, I can only imagine what we can invite by the proliferation of medical marijuana on our campuses.
Thank you. Matthew Cohen is our next speaker, then Daniel Sosa, and then Robert Hodge. Good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Matthew Cohen, and I am the owner and operator of The Natural Way of Los Angeles at 5817 Pico Boulevard. Paul Corretts will your district. I've not been here before, but I am the operator of one of the original accredited clubs from the Glaca Group. And I just wanted to quote for you, and I am so in favor of an ordinance. However, this ordinance has too many points that are just untenable for my dispensary and for really any of the dispensaries that I know, especially all the good ones. And that is the residential buffer zone, which simply will not work in this city, and your redistribution plan, which is Town and Mountain Club City. And I want to quote for you real quickly just some numbers I pulled from my database this weekend because this should really send fear through the hearts of the elected officials because I'm just one dispensary with 2,103 active patients as of yesterday. Active patients are folks who visited within 90 days. Within two miles of my shop at Pico in Fairfax, 429 of my patients are homeowners. 429 within two miles of my shop.
Daniel Sosa is our next speaker, and after that is Robert Hodge. And then after Mr. Hodge will be Graham Barry. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Daniel Sosa. I operate La Brea Collective near La Brea and Wilshire. It's one of the original 187 collectives. I would like you guys to please consider—I think we need to make sure that all of the 187 original collectives get priority. We've been playing by the rules since 2007. We went down to the city, took the time, gave you guys all of our business and personal information. Ready for you guys to regulate us. Another thing, I think we need the licenses to be portable. And by that, I mean if a collective needs to move to get into a better situation for itself or the community, they should be allowed to do so. Also, please consider that a residence as a sensitive use is way too restrictive. That doesn't make any sense. Also, 1,000 feet is too restrictive. 500 feet is slightly more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sosa. Robert Hodge is our next speaker, and Graham Barry will follow.
We talk about buffer zones and zoning areas, but do you guys know if there's any buildings in that area that we can move a collective to that will allow for cultivation? Are the owners, you know, allowing this? Or do you guys care? And another thing, if we're going to have that, we're going to have unarmed guards guarding plants of that kind. Are you guys crazy? You don't think anybody's going to come in there and try to rob it? You're going to have that. Is that's what it's going to take? Plus, you're going to have supersized Walmart-type collectives because that's the kind of size it's going to take to cultivate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Graham Barry is our next speaker. After that is Lisa Sarkin, and then we have Cheryl Eickley.
Good morning, councilors. Graham Barry appearing on behalf of myself and Stuart Richland's Law Office, which represents many of the people here today. The proposed ordinance limiting the number of collectives may sound sensible until you actually think about it. And similarly, the proposed sensitive use boundaries may also sound sensible until you think about it. And when you think about it, you realize there are no similar restrictions on other medical providers or medicines. Apparently, there are over 900 collectives and dispensaries now operating in the city. Clearly, there is a need for more than 70, and many sick people are going to have to travel long distances to Costco-style facilities. Therefore, we propose the addition of a portability provision to the proposed ordinance. If the original 187 are allowed to survive as they must, then they should be able to relocate within the provisions of the proposed ordinance. First, to mitigate any favoritism, and secondly, to mitigate any landlord who prey upon the chained premises.
Thank you very much. Lisa Sarkin is next, then Cheryl Eickley, and then Earl Stein. Good morning.
Good morning. Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council, Amuse Chair. Los Angeles has let this ordinance languish for far too long. 13 collectives are operating within the Studio City limits. That's an area of 1 by 1 and 1/2 miles. Legal uses must be protected, but our communities are oversaturated. Just as cigarette smoke travels into homes and businesses, so does marijuana smoke. Smoking inside and out of the collectives is occurring every day. I don't see anywhere in the ordinance where it prohibits use in public or in the collective storefronts. I wonder if that's something that needs to be added. And I'd like you to please make sure that there is a budget so that the Department of Building and Safety will be able to enforce this, as it was not able, in my opinion, to enforce the ICO because there wasn't any budget for it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Cheryl Eickley is our next speaker.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Cheryl Eickley, a citizen of Los Angeles. I'd like to agree with the majority of my colleagues who have spoken. They're the ones in the business suits who acted professional, so I'd like to just reincinerate what they said. And also, I want to say that the ordinance that you have before you isn't enforceable. There's certain parts of it, like requiring a dispensary to have all their medicine tested at an independent and certified location, that actually can't happen because there is no independent certified location that the dispensary can go to. So it's basically de facto eradication of medical cannabis, or you're asking us to break the law. You're making a law that cannot be met, and so you're asking us to break the law so that we have safe and affordable access. It's kind of like asking us to climb jack-of-the-bean stocks when there is none. It's like asking us to do something that cannot be accomplished. If you do that, we will break the law. It'll be ugly. I really wish you guys would work out just a few more details of this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Earl Stein.
Good morning, council. And Councilman Rosendahl is our councilman. I appreciate him very much. I understand that there's 350,000 to 500,000 medical marijuana patients in Los Angeles. If you think 70 stores are going to get paid medicine for those 350,000 to 500,000 patients, you're nuts. There's no way. You can't do it. There'll be lines around the block. What will your constituents think then when there's lines, you know, two hours long? I think that's crazy. Thank you very much for your time.
Duke Smith.
Yes, since 2006, we've been coming here, and after four years, almost nothing seems like it's getting done. First, you did Too Little Too Late in getting the moratorium. Now, what you've written is so implausible that it doesn't even make sense. And you're sitting up there, and going to pass a vote on this, maybe today, maybe next week. I don't know. We can't keep coming back. And you all pat yourself on the back and get your photo ops back there. But the bottom line is it's not done. You've looked at attacks, regulate, monopolize commerce. You haven't talked to the patients. You haven't done your job. If Mr. Kokorian, his name was Kirk, and he ran this place, he could write a check to solve our budget, and he could fire all of you. God, I wish that's the way things were done in politics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Larson. Mr. Larson.
Good morning, council. Michael Larson, Negro Rock Neighborhood Council. I just want to thank you all for your hard work on this issue over the years, particularly our council member, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes, for the work that they've been doing on this. We do appreciate it. Our council would like to recommend that you adopt the 1,000-foot sensitive use buffer, and we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Rodriko Iglesias. I'm a real estate agent in the city of Los Angeles for the last 24 years. I've been licensed by the City of LA for the last 24 years to do real estate. I am a great fan of this great city. Coming as an immigrant from Argentina, I made my life as a real estate agent. I am a medical marijuana patient. I am a card member from the state. And in issues in passing your legislation, I'd like to reinforce some of the things that were talked about today in being able to pass the licenses for the original 187 clinics. So the landlords don't become abusive to tenants and charge punitive rents that are completely making the dispensary owners that have been doing the things right in a position in which it's the fastest for city.
Tiffany Wright. Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Tiffany Wright.
Good afternoon. Thank you for listening. I just want to make a point that, of course, the original 70 or 187 collectives want an ordinance that says that they should get to stay open because business will be booming for them. But somebody made an excellent point that with hundreds of thousands of patients, they will not be able to provide the patients with the safe and convenient access that they are guaranteed by law. Furthermore, being a user of alternative natural medicine is no different from choosing a vegetarian or a vegan diet as an alternative to pumping your body full of chemicals and synthetics. I see patients every day volunteering at a collective whose qualities of life is vastly improved by this natural medicine, and I feel that the city council is at danger of making this a discriminatory issue. So I just want to encourage you to keep in mind what's most important, and that is the interest of the patients. Patients need readily available, convenient access, and by shutting down hundreds of collectives, you're limiting that and discriminating against them. Please don't discriminate. Thank you.
David Abbasi.
My name is David Abbasi. I am a 21-year resident of the San Fernando Valley. I would like to thank you for recognizing that the opposition is convoluted and makes false statements. The propaganda, the negative propaganda that's perpetuated is based on lies. I want to also encourage you to consider sensible and reasonable regulations that will allow patients safe and affordable access, as was clearly stated in Proposition 215. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Brendan Dick.
Good evening, city council. I want to thank you. I represent Venice Beach Care Center. We're one of the original 187. We look at it as a privilege to be in business and here in the city of Los Angeles. First of all, let me just state, in October of 2009, there was a poll, Los Angeles County. 77% of the voters said yes, they support regulation and they support medical marijuana. Number two, this draft, this ordinance, was started simply to wipe us out, all of us. So what we still have today is an attempt to wipe most of us out. So please take that into account when you're voting today. I think this is not ready to go, and we should consider this further. Thank you.
Nelson Grande II.
I'm not here to defend the people out here. I'm here to defend you folks. I'm not sure if you're aware, but last week, the State Assembly voted to pass AB 390, which will essentially legalize, tax, and regulate the sale of marijuana over the counter to anyone over 21. Now, I'm here to defend you. Do you want this November to be the party that held on to old idealism, old idiosyncratic ideas that were part of this whole reef of madness? Or do you want to live to the future and be re-elected as going with what people want? The people want to end prohibition. The people want their access. And I think come November, if you go the way of the dodo, the way of how it's been with prohibition, I think maybe most of you would be looking at not necessarily being re-elected. Thank you.
William Leahy.
I'm the general manager— I'm the general manager of the pharmacy. We seem to have desensitized in the communities that there are 15,000 liquor stores and 9,000 restaurants that have liquor, beer, and more. And we have approximately 7,000 pharmacies that are all in our neighborhoods. They've all desensitized and are not afraid of that. The dispensaries and collectives that I am associated with, we work very hard to be a part of the community, so much so that I would say that you take all the pharmacies, restaurants, and liquor stores and put them together. Our pharmacy has done far more. It has even gone to the point of where I think that our model is good enough that last night, I got a telephone call from another state, a senator, who said that our collective was the exact role model that he wanted to put in his community, put in his neighborhood, and asked me if I would come to that state and help him work on that bill. So we have it here. Thank you.
Colleagues, we have six more public speakers on this particular item. James Shaw.
Our new police chief recently restated to the press that there is no spike in crime around patient associations, something we've been telling you all along. Patient associations are about patients collectively cultivating. This is about community and culture. Defining sensitive use areas for this ordinance is about making sure that unruly patients don't move into neighborhoods and cause a nuisance. But the net effect is to disintegrate the current local neighborhood patient associations that are about community and culture and have good neighbor relations, and move big business into industrial zones. The solution is to allow patient associations who have a proven track record of good neighbor relations to stay in their location regardless of sensitive uses. While there are many challenges with the ordinance as written, the requirement that long-established patients' associations relocate is the only major issue remaining for which our organization would feel compelled to litigate. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the San Fernando Valley, Van Nuys City Hall, Carl Cruz in Van Nuys. Mr. Cruz.
Good morning, city council. I'm Pastor Carl Cruz with Victory Outreach here in the San Fernando Valley. We do quite a bit of work in the rehabilitation area. And when we've seen this situation take place, I begin to think about what our future for the valley is going to be. I had the opportunity to go to Australia and witness where they legalized heroin. And what I saw was that the government created a monster they couldn't control anymore. And that's our concern, since we see that a lot of the kids, a lot of the youth, when they engage in drugs, marijuana is a big part of it. I understand there's a need for medical use, and I think the 1,000-foot ordinance will be something that can be put into place to protect the children and the youth within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Back here at City Hall, Amanda Brazil.
Thank you for your care on this issue. It's unfortunate that Reefer Madness is still impacting our public policy. The residential abutment provision is unnecessary, as we have spoken over and over again. Our youth are using pharmaceutical drugs at an alarming rate. Does that mean we're going to stop prescribing drugs like OxyContin to the patients who need that? And the truth is, is that it's really the prohibition of cannabis that is the greatest risk to our youth. Drug dealers do not ID, and that is the most accessible resource that kids have for drugs. I mean, there's many kids who have access to drugs. This is a reality. The drug war has failed us miserably as a society, that we can't even keep drugs out of prisons. How are we going to keep them off of our streets and out of our schools? And come on, let's be serious. Just because there's a liquor store on many corners in our city doesn't mean we're all going to leave here and go get drunk this afternoon. Let's truly be reasonable and sincere about our policies here.
Thank you. Anthony Buzard.
You know, last week, the city planning gave you guys some maps to look at. There were six different ones with different buffer zones from sensitive use. I don't know if you guys realize, but none of those maps, none, showed the impact of abutting residential, not one map. So you voted on a motion without any knowledge of what it would do, without any impact and knowing what the impact would be on the city. So you need to reconsider that. They're willing to make you a map. Look at the map before you make a decision. Also, you know, how can you change a state law and you're the city? The state law says you don't need a card, a state card. All you need is a prescription from a doctor. I don't understand why you guys are trying to change that rule. Also, the cap of 70, I mean, if you're going to grandfather in 137, or 186, or whatever it is, raise the cap. Raise the cap. Make it so there's access for everybody.
Thank you, sir. Desiree Hawkins.
Good day, city council members. I am here as a medical marijuana patient who voted against the moratorium until it had a grandfather clause. I'm here once again to vote against any kind of ordinance without a grandfather clause. That grandfather clause would be that every single open, successful, non-problematic dispensary is allowed to stay open. There's no need to change anything as it is right now. With 1,000 dispensaries open in this city, has anybody here personally found any problem with one of them? No. Well, personally, I would love to be the iceberg to blow open this entire idea of an ordinance that doesn't work. Having cards that we have to have to the state is an extra expense on those who have to deal with disabilities, have to file paperwork that they may not...
Thank you, ma'am. Our final speaker, Jessica Hile. And Jessica will be our final speaker on this matter.
Good morning, city council. I'm a medical cannabis patient advocate, and I've been coming here for the last five years to watch my colleagues try to help you guys get this through in a way that makes sense. We're all ready to move forward. However, creating a regulation that ignores the geographic plan of the city is an ignorant way to create policy. I'm here to ask the council to either remove the restrictive 1,000-foot boundary and/or to allow responsible clinics who registered pre-ICO to have a good neighbor variance where they can prove to their councils and to their communities what assets they are and that they should be allowed to stay open. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. We'll return to Mr. Reyes. And after Mr. Reyes is Mr. Rosendahl. And thank you, everybody, for, again, your presence and for your comments. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to call the question. Councilman?
Okay. Mr. Reyes has moved the... He's called the question. Only Mr. Rosendahl is on the queue. Is there an objection to moving the... To calling the question? Just take a vote.
There's two ordinances, so how would we call in the question?
We would proceed with... I checked with the city attorney ahead of time, folks. We have two different versions, so we'd vote on 500, we'd vote on 1,000. If, you know, obviously, then there are other motions that have been made today, so we need to vote on those as well, because those have been... If they've been circulated. Do Mr. Clerk, have any of them been circulated? Okay. We have... Sorry, none have been circulated. So is there... Just first and foremost, procedurally, is there any objection to calling the question? Okay, there is an objection that requires then a vote. This would be a 10-person vote to calling the question. Please open the roll. That means ending debate. Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Nine eyes, five no's.
That fails. So Mr. Rosendahl is next on the queue. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for allowing the discussion to continue. Especially want to thank everybody here in the audience on both sides of the issues for making the democracy work. That's what the democracy is about, is coming here and discussing your positions. Colleagues, you all know I have a real problem with both of these motions. I think we need to keep it from getting back in the dark alleys and all the criminality that's been associated. I think when the Congress in the 80s tightened it up and made it the most hideous law on the books, that is what has filled up prisons and destroyed people's lives. Some of you have heard me last week, my partner, my first partner, died on the 13th of January, 15 years ago. And if it wasn't for medicinal marijuana, he would not have lived those additional eight years. Marijuana has been proven to be a medicinal herb. It's been around for thousands of years, and for anybody to consider it the worst drug on the planet is insane. We have more people in prison in the United States than any country on the planet, and that's because of this crazy law on marijuana. Colleagues, some of you might remember, I did a television show for 16 years. I did 3,000 shows. It was to inform and educate and connect people to the issues of the day. And in that, I did Prop 215, back and forth and up and down. And never did I hear all this craziness about you can't use cash, and you can't do this, and you can't do that. These are all crazy strategies, because people don't have the guts and the courage to stand up and say, "We got rid of the alcohol prohibition because that didn't work. Why can't we do the same thing with marijuana?" Period. And lastly, colleagues, look, we have the worst budget crisis in the city's history. Why don't we just regulate and tax and get on with our budget issues? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have to apologize, not being here last week when we discussed this, but there's two issues I'm concerned with, and that is, number one, on the chart that's used to show the community plans. If you go back and look at the areas that are most densely populated, it just happens to be in many of these areas that also have the significant crime rate in smaller areas in older parts of the city. The potential, at least for the 8th and a portion of the 9th district, is that we could end up with as many as 13 collectives, which would be, out of 70, in my judgment, a significant imbalance as it relates from area we represent compared to the citywide. The other issue, when I last was involved in the debate, we had made such a specific effort to keep the residential zone and residential usage into sensitive area, and I understand they've been moved out. And so this is something that is two areas that I believe are major negatives towards my district. And one of the things I think that in looking at it from the 70, if that's going to be the number, the imbalance because of density certainly bodes against communities that are older in the sense of addressing this issue and also adds another hurdle into many things that are already dealing with the crime. And although I respect Mr. Rosendahl's comments earlier, I have a different perspective in the sense that we have seen over my 38 years of law enforcement that often alcohol, marijuana, and other gateway drugs lead you to larger usage and more serious drugs.
And although... I could please ask everybody to show respect.
Let me finish mine.
Excuse me if I could ask the chambers to please be respectful.
Let's be a little respectful, because I said quietly, listen to you. All right? So the issue is, is that I would like to... I understand there was a motion when I was gone that we had at one time 500 feet from residential or residential use, that I would like to make a motion that we bring that back, because the abutment issue, in my judgment, doesn't give the adequate protection that we were trying to secure by that initial concern. And so I'd move that on, that the sensitive issues of 1,000 feet remain as voted on, but that we go back to the 500-foot residential use and residential zoning so that we can have additional protection for communities that certainly need it.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Perry seconded that. Mr. Huizar is next.
Point of information before my time starts, is that A, isn't that ordinance A? No.
No, this is something separate.
No.
We had voted on that previously. I think Mr. Parks just moved to add a 500-foot residential buffer to the ordinance.
Okay. Residential. Okay, I got it. I got it. Okay, good. Well, thank you. And on the section where we added some language at the last meeting that we would make some exceptions for those dispensaries that had received a DEA letter, I had asked at the previous meeting if we could come back and if staff could report to us whether that's going to be zero, or it could be anywhere up to an additional 50. So I just wanted to make sure that that language we have in the ordinance right now, what does it mean in practical terms? And if the staff could let us know any findings on that issue.
Councilman Jane Usher of the City Attorney's Office. We did the research that was available to us, so here's how we proceeded. There are roughly councilmen and women's...
I'm sorry, before you go...
Yes.
Mr. President, I know you have instituted a new rule now where we don't hold time. At the last meeting, we were doing that again, so I'm not sure under what...
I wasn't holding it. If there's somebody else in the chair that did that, we've just been running the clock.
We just run the clock.
Yeah, just press your button again.
We just press our button again.
Yeah, when people open, they get six minutes, and then everybody else... I'll pause this while you're clarifying that. Three minutes, okay?
So if you could get to the point and keep it brief, because my time is running. Thank you.
There are 11 collectives that registered under the ICO whose hardship application reveals a reference to an enforcement letter. 11. There are six who registered under the ICO who filed a hardship application, who make no mention of a federal DEA enforcement letter. The letters are not present for the 11. The letters aren't even referenced for the six. And of course, if you were one of the 186, you didn't necessarily have to file a hardship exemption.
So we could have, with that language that was put in there last time, we could have up to 49 additional dispensaries.
That's correct.
That's correct. And colleagues, that's what concerns me, because we agreed last time that we were going to do 70. That's our goal. But we also agreed that there were 137 operating at the time we discussed this, and that we said, "Well, grandfather those in, and when we come back and they have to comply with new rules, we don't know how many we're going to get. We may get 100. We may go below 70, but if we go below 70, we'll come back up to 70." My concern with this language that was inserted at the last meeting is this, that we could potentially go back to 186, and that wasn't the intent that we had originally. So unless we could clarify that, or if that's okay with you colleagues, that we go back to 186, we'll leave that language in there. But we could potentially see us go back to 186 and not keep it at 137.
If I may, Mr. Reyes.
As a point of clarification, I believe we kept saying we weren't going to grandfather. Grandfather wasn't a term we were using. We said if they met all the criteria... Yeah. And went through all those different levels. The word grandfather was not part of our vocabulary in this ordinance.
And as the answer, I believe, it was still with a cap of 139, so it could never get beyond that even with this? Is that how it's written? It lifts that cap?
There's a cap, Council President, of 70, except for those who registered under the ICO, of which there were a total of 186, who meet all the conditions.
Yes, so we... Although we've been talking about the number 137, it's not in the ordinance, but given the language we're using to allow those to continue to operate that have been operating, it could potentially go up to 137. However, with that new language that was inserted at the last meeting, this could potentially go up to 186, and that is a number that I certainly do not feel comfortable with. And I'm not sure if others who voted that way also would agree with that. So something for consideration as we proceed in today's discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Mr. Carricks.
If you don't mind, I'll hang on till that goes by. Well, as we all know, and we've all discussed this to death, we're trying to do a combination of getting a problem that's been out of control, under control, and maintaining access at the same time. First of all, I would hope that we not seriously, at this point, entertain the idea of a 500-foot requirement from residential, because we take everything that we've done and we essentially throw it out the window and leave only a handful of locations for a dispensary, and this ordinance, in essence, becomes a fig leaf. We pretend we're actually protecting access, but we wipe out almost the entire system. There are some other issues of access, et cetera, that I think have not yet been dealt with.[1800.33] dealt with. But I think there's a desire on the part of virtually everyone on the council, and probably me included, to not make this ordinance a moving target, where each time we come together, we think we've nailed it down, and yet we have to bring it back over and over. So I have agreed in the conversation with some of my colleagues, not to bring ordinances to tie down a few fine points, but to bring those back at an expeditious later date within the next month or two. I think there are a number of items relating to zoning, et cetera, that need to be cleaned up, but we need to do something once and for all. The one, the one real issue that is on the table to be decided, and one that I'm still struggling with, is the 500-foot to 1,000-foot requirement. And I'm wondering if one could nail down the exact number of the 137 permitted dispensaries that would be allowed to continue at their present location under the 500-foot requirement and under the 1,000-foot requirement, so we understand how disruptive the more restrictive option would be.
Councilman Jane Usher, we're looking for a representative from planning to see whether they could give you that answer. While we're waiting--
I hope we have them behind you.
Good. While we're waiting, we've written the ordinance so that they can all move if they've complied. But I understand your question to be, how many of the 137 would have to move?
And it's a struggle for me. And I've tried to, to make this as reasonable as possible for both sides. And I've talked in the community several times about my willingness to go for the 1,000, but I also didn't know that the 500 would be on the table. Now that it is, I really want to know what the difference would be in terms of impact. And particularly, if you didn't hear that part--
Right.
--on the existing dispensaries, how many would be able to maintain their existing location at both the 500 and the 1,000-foot level?
If the Allen Bell City Planning Department, if the question is, we have a 1,000-foot buffer around sensitive uses, and a 500-foot buffer around residential uses, our estimate is that only four of the existing 137 dispensaries could remain in their current location, and 133 would be compelled to move to a new location and comply with the new ordinance.
That's at the 1,000-foot level?
1,000 feet around sensitive uses and 500 feet around residential uses. That is the scenario.
No, that's not what I'm asking about. What I'm asking about is what's actually on the table. The 500-foot around residential is not on the table, except in a separate motion. What's on the table is 1,000 feet from residential, I mean, excuse me, 1,000 feet from sensitive uses or 500 feet from sensitive uses. And I want to know how many, how many continue to exist at their current locations under each scenario.
If I could ask you to press your button again after that, Mr. Kretz, after this answer. Thank you.
It depends upon what the standard is for residential uses. We did take a look at both of those scenarios.
The standard is in the ordinance as it is before us, is what we're talking about.
Right. But we analyzed different, we didn't analyze it without taking into consideration the impact of some kind of a residential standard. Well, what we did do is we looked at the 1,000-foot around sensitive uses and 500 feet, but with no buffer around residential uses. So I can give you the statistics for those two scenarios, if that is your question.
Yes.
Okay. If it's 500 feet around sensitive uses, no residential buffer, it's 75 could stay in their current location, and 62 would have to move. That is 500 feet around sensitive uses. For 1,000 feet around sensitive uses, again, no buffer around residential, 39 could stay in their current location, and then 98 would have to move.
If I could just ask one other-- Sorry, Mr. Kretz, just under the rules, if we can just, we'll come back here. There's only one speaker on the queue. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Compassionate Use Act, which was a concern of the voters, and respond to Mr. Rosenthal's issue and concerns, the federal government is not going to legalize it under this administration. We need to work under the laws of this land, and that's what we're doing. I just wanted to illustrate, and I pass it off to some of my colleagues, I was at a market in the valley Saturday, and a man was dropping off a magazine called Kush, K-U-S-H. And I don't know if it's reputable or not reputable, but it advertises for medical marijuana. And talking about profiteering, one-ounce specials, $350. Blue dot, $110. The lowest price on this is $110, goes up to $350. I don't know if the City Attorney's Office is in control or something of the price that people are going to be paying. I understand compassion. Compassion can cost $350 to someone who's suffering from an illness, needs medical marijuana. I don't know the price structure, but the fact is, when I look at this, and I look at all the information in here, it's horrifying how much people are charging for something to help people who are legitimately sick. Can you comment on that aspect, please?
Councilman Zine, Jane Usher, City Attorney's Office. I think it's easy to have a selective memory on all sides. The ballot argument that accompanied Prop 215, the Compassionate Use Act, specifically said that sales of marijuana would not be permitted by virtue of adopting compassionate use. So when you then turn to our office and ask about regulating prices, you can see that there is a conflict between what the ballot initiative carried with it, and what has transpired in our city and in our state. I can't comment further, except to say, it continues to be the position of the City Attorney's Office, that what the Compassionate Use Act and Medical Marijuana Program Act authorized, were simply collective and cooperatives coming together for their, for the cultivation of medical marijuana for their patients, or for the patients of their primary caregivers, period.
So this would not qualify at all under the state measure that was passed by the voters?
Honestly, Councilman, every instance is a fact-based consideration as to whether the conduct complies or doesn't comply. And that's how we are going to have to address it going forward, unless and until new laws are adopted.
And there's no law regulation regarding the price people can charge for medical marijuana, whether it be $5 or $350 for an ounce?
The position of our office is, you collectively or cooperatively cultivate. It doesn't sound like selling to me. I hope it doesn't sound like selling to you. There shouldn't be a price.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and then Mr. Kretz.
Serious question to the City Attorney. And I preface it with, this is a serious question. Is there anything in the law that precludes us from having a public option? Do you understand what I mean by that?
I don't, so sorry, Councilman.
When you hear about the debate in Washington where they say, well, let the insurance companies provide the insurance, and the government should stay out of it. In this case, they're saying, let the dispensaries deal with $110 an ounce or $350 an ounce. What if we had a public option? Is there anything that precludes the City of Los Angeles from actually having a public dispensary where the public actually provides, or the government actually provides that product?
Councilman, at the moment, under the state of the law, as you know, the federal government has made a decision regarding medical, regarding marijuana.
But we're not the federal government, we're state government, city government.
But we are compelled to comply with federal law as well as state law. So unless and until federal and state law are changed, the City of Los Angeles is limited and bound to comply with a regimen that doesn't permit, as I understand it, the public option that you're describing. Because the only people who are allowed to cultivate marijuana at the present are patients and primary caregivers.
But what if we had somebody who works for the City of Los Angeles who falls into that category? I mean, we could create a partnership with that person, couldn't we?
I don't see anything in the law that allows for that.
Really? So what you're saying is, if somebody has a dispensary, they have to fall into that category, but they cannot have a business partner that actually funds the organ, funds the dispensary? The City of Los Angeles couldn't fund a dispensary and be in partnership with somebody who falls into that category?
My understanding of state law is, the people who are allowed to cultivate as a cooperative or as a collective are patients, those with ID cards, and primary caregivers. And I don't see any way for the City of Los Angeles to qualify as any of those three.
I'm not asking you if they could qualify as one of those three. Could we actually partner with one of those three?
There's no provision in state law in the regulatory--
Could we bankroll a facility like that?
Councilman, my--
What I'm talking, no, hold on a second. What I'm talking about is, for example, a dispensary, they may go to a bank, they can float a bond if they allow, if they're 501(c)(3), they can go ahead and get financing in order to help fund this dispensary. Can the City of Los, is, you're telling me the City of Los Angeles is precluded from acting as a financial backer of a dispensary like this?
Councilman, I certainly think you would be putting the city at jeopardy and at risk for violating all of the laws, state and federal, controlling marijuana. I do not think that there is anything in state law that contemplates what you're suggesting. And it would be my advice that if you wanted to pursue that opportunity, state law should be amended.
Okay, I'll press my button again.
Thank you. Mr. Kretz is next, then Mr. Weisar, both for a second time.
Yeah, just to finish up what I was contemplating with the 500-foot requirement, or the 1,000-foot requirement, under the 1,000-foot, about three-quarters of the current locations would have to move. And that's without including the residential requirement that we've since added, which deals with abutting and locations that are across the alley from residential, which in many areas are, most are all of them. So I'm guessing, and we haven't studied, that there could be as few as 20 of our existing locations out of 137 that actually survive at their present location with the 1,000-foot requirement. So is there any reason to think that that wouldn't be the case?
What we've done to, to address that issue is, we did two scenarios. One that looked at, at no residential buffer. And we also looked at a 200-foot residential buffer. And that kind of brackets the choices that had been before the council. The proposed language in terms of proximity to residential uses, let's say, adjacency language, including sharing a common corner or being across the street, it would fall somewhere between those two different standards. It would be more restrictive than no buffer, but it would be less restrictive than a 200-foot buffer. And our analysis shows on the 200-foot buffer, at the more restrictive end of the range, around 10,000 acres would be available citywide. With no buffer, it would be a little over 13,000 acres. So the standard, the adjacency standard, would fall in between those two ranges.
Well, at the 200-foot buffer, there are 19 of the present locations that can stay. I would just observe that most of the ones impacted by the 200 feet would be similarly impacted by the across the alley. So I would just ask my colleagues, as they consider 500 or 1,000 feet, to be aware that probably only around 20 or so of the present locations out of 137 would be able to stay in their present location. I'm still contemplating this myself, whether to go with 500 or 1,000, but everybody should at least think through the impacts.
Mr. Alakon for the first time, and Mr. Weisar, Cardenas, and Rosenthal for the second times.
I'm sorry, I had the munchies. I just want to ask a question about the residential facilities that are referred to in the ordinance. These facilities, can you describe them to me? Somebody.
Councilman, let me help Allen Bell a little bit. These are defined words in our L.A. municipal code. So, Allen, for your purposes, I'm looking at a licensed residential medical facility or an elder care facility.
Does that include, for example, hospices?
I believe it does, Council--
So hospices, residential care facilities, what was the other one?
It's an elder care facility.
Elder care facilities, these are all excluding from any restrictions we, that are in the ordinance, according to, that we're talking about now, with regard to space allocation?
Yes, they are.
So all these facilities would be able to cultivate marijuana and give it to the patients?
That's correct. In other words--
Do we know how many that is, from the planning department?
Of those facilities?
Yeah.
No, we do not have an estimate of those numbers of facilities.
I raised this question last week. I mean, do we have any sense of how many of those facilities, do we know how many hospices there are?
We did not analyze that question. So we do not have that information.
So when you say that these organizations would be prohibited from distribution, except from, that you are assuming they know that these other facilities are able to do it? Because you haven't done any analysis on the true number, because there are literally hundreds of these facilities, if not thousands of these facilities, in the City of Los Angeles. Is that not correct?
That is correct. They're primarily located--
Why don't we have a map on that?
I would take an incredible amount of time to generate that map.
Can you just tell me where, like, 10 of them are? Can you do, like, my district?
No, I cannot.
You can't? So who's in charge of that?
That was not one of the tasks that we took upon in terms of analyzing the impacts of this ordinance.
No, but every time I ask the question, and you haven't done the analysis, I asked the question before. I asked the question in December. And, and no analysis has been done, and yet you keep saying that, that no one else can operate except, whether it's abutting, or 500 feet, or 1,000. You keep saying that, but you keep not mentioning the other hundreds of facilities, if not thousands of facilities, that will operate no matter what restrictions we make to separation.
After you get this answer, if you can press your button again, Mr. Alakon.
So I'd like to get an answer to that question. How many of these facilities are there?
Certainly also, and I think the City Attorney could correct me, I think the language of the ordinance says they still comply with the sensitive use restrictions.
Councilman, I think what Allen is searching for is, the ordinance is currently drafted, has a cap, and then some other qualifiers. The provision about residential care and elder care facilities is only for purposes of determining a buffer. There is no space, no distance requirement, no buffer, but it wouldn't alter the cap.
Okay. So we have hundreds of these facilities, and we're talking about a cap of 70?
Your time is up, sir. Right. And Mr. Weisar is next. We're going to press your button again. Mr. Weisar? Mr. Weisar? You're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, a amended motion on the language that was introduced last week that would allow for potentially 49 more dispensaries to operate, should we adopt that language, the language is, or has moved once due to an enforcement letter from a federal governmental entity. Again, the issue is that we are allowing 137 under the language you've adopted, but if we add that one sentence, we would allow potentially 186. The amended motion that I put forward asks for an additional few, a couple of more requirements. So you keep that language that says, and add, and relocated within the City of Los Angeles, and filed a hardship exemption pursuant to ordinance 179027. What that will do essentially is add potentially, not for sure, but potentially add 17 more dispensaries. It would not allow the 49 more, but would show that through good faith, those who are attempting to comply and work within the system, they came back to try to work within the city. I do have concern that we would go back to 186. We're trying to keep it within the 70 cap, but with these exceptions, we will allow 17 who have been working with us and trying to work with us, with whatever barriers, with whatever new ordinance we put before them, they've been trying to work with us, and this will allow those 17 to come within this purview. City Attorney, any comments on this?
Councilman, I'm just reading the operative language of your motion, and I'm going to need a minute to wordsmith it, but I'll tell you what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make sure that there's a comma after 2007, and then that phrase that begins with "or." You have to meet all of those requirements.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you very much. And the practical effect of this would be 17 dispensaries that would qualify? Is that accurate, more or less?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And again, this would raise us to about 154 if you add 17, 137. And again, this would raise us to about 154 if you add 17, 137, that's 154 potential dispensaries. However, again, we don't know if we're going to reach those, because under our rules, they all would have to abide by all those additional requirements. For example, no same ownership between dispensaries. There may be some right now under the 154 that have the same ownership. Some of them may have other-- have not been cited. Some of them may have been cited, and so therefore do not qualify under 154. So we don't know exactly, but this certainly is telling us that we're going to have no more than 154 under this new language. I would have preferred to leave it at 137, but given Mr. Rosenthal's interest in moving forward and trying to work with those that are working with the city, I prefer this language to allow 17 additional ones than potentially 49. I ask that you support this amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar, Mr. Cardenas for a second time, Mr. Rosenthal for a second time, and Mr. Alacon for a second time.
Yeah, I disagree with the city attorney's office that a public option is not allowed, yet at the same time, I want to make it very clear, I'm not making a motion for a public option. So for those of you who are doing very well in your profit range, don't worry, we're not going to compete with you guys as far as I'm concerned. But what I do want to make sure that we understand is that-- personally, I would like to have a 500-foot rule around residences. However, looking at the maps, putting it 500 feet away from residences means that there are areas in Weisar's district that will have a concentration of these, a corridor of these, and areas in Council District 7, Alagon's, and my south, et cetera. But Rosenthal, his district, would get either one or none, almost. And also Carruthers' district will get maybe one or two, and I'll end up with a dozen. So what I would rather see is I would rather see something that allows proper use, but at the same time, distributed as amicably as possible throughout the city. So as much as I would like to see a 500-foot buffer away from residences, at the same time, unfortunately, what it would do, in my opinion, it would zone out so many areas that it would be overly concentrated in certain districts and certain communities, and it won't be concentrated-- it will not be equitably distributed around the city. So that's the reason why I'm okay with the abutting being the restriction when it comes to residences. Otherwise, I would be going for a distance rule. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I certainly appreciate Mr. Cardenas's appreciation that we should have some flexibility. You all know I'm going to vote no anyhow, because I just think the whole thing is insane, but I want to make three points. First, city attorney's office, question for you. Assuming my colleagues vote one of these in, what happens to the existing clinics out there in the context of-- how do they get shut down? What is the procedure that we will use?
Councilman--
My colleagues need to know the consequences of their action today.
Councilman Jane Usher, city attorney's office. First, the ordinance needs to take--
Hold my time, please, while she's-- Oh, okay, all right, okay, great.
I'll be quick. The ordinance needs to take effect. By its own terms, it does not take effect until you've adopted the registration fee ordinance, which I do not believe has come before you yet. So, once the ordinance does take effect, some weeks or months from now, we will begin as an office researching, along with planning, in the Department of Building and Safety, to determine which collectives do not meet the definition. I'll simply refer to it as paragraph two. Paragraph two being the one that provides who gets to stay. And we'll begin seeking voluntary closure and compliance from the ones who don't meet that test.
Very good. So when you do that, you'll notify them, so we don't have some draconian knock on the door and come in and smash things apart type activity?
That's how we'll proceed, unless you prefer the smashing and the knocking and the draconian.
Yeah, but we don't want any of that. If we're going to close them down, let's do it with a civilized strategy.
Excellent.
All right. And the second issue-- second issue is cultivation. How are we going to do that in the sunshine to make sure that those that do exist, you know, create a healthy medicinal marijuana rather than something with chemicals? Who's going to monitor that?
Again, Councilman, who's going to monitor which aspect?
The actual growing and cultivation, so that a person who has a prescription knows it's safe.
So I'll give you two answers. The collectives themselves are given a series of requirements about testing and posting as to their own cultivated stock. And then, of course, there are state laws, most notably the Sherman Law, that talks about being pesticide chemical and free from taint. And those laws will continue to apply and be enforced.
Okay. And the last thing is just more rhetorical. I never believed in 70 to begin with. I thought it should be determined by situation. I think some of these hardship ones are fine and should be worked into the program as well, but I know I'm a vote of one. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President and members, and to Bill. I love you and have the highest respect for you, but you've called us-- you said we've had a lack of courage today, and the statement that you also made a few seconds ago, you basically said we're stupid by having-- assuming that we didn't know what was going on. So I highly recommend that you tone that down, because it might upset somebody, not me, because when I'm angry, you wouldn't want to see me angry. We, members, really need to pass something today. There's no way we're going to make this perfect. None of us have a crystal ball. We can't see into the future, so we don't know what kind of consequences are going to happen until we do something. So there's got to be a way, Mr. President, where it relates to amendments or other motions, that we could still consider moving forward and taking action, and then have those amendments or motions reviewed and brought back at a later date. Paul, Paul, Richard, Tony, and myself, in Sacramento, on a regular basis, we pass a law, a bill, and then we realize there were unintended consequences, and then we come back and we add clarification language. So in the event-- you know, I don't know if 70 is enough or 100. Maybe it's not. And I don't know if a person should be restricted to just one collective. Maybe it's not. But we will not know until we put something in place so that we can monitor it and then take the corrective action. So I just want to ask whoever could give the answer, in the event that we move forward on one of the actual motions that are in place today, suppose we have a problem with it later, what would we have to do to amend it, adjust it, clarify it?
Councilman Wesson, Jane Usher, city attorney, the council retains its legislative power, and that means you always have the prerogative to amend.
So will there be-- do we have to wait six months?
No, you do not.
A year?
There is no waiting period.
So if we wanted to change it in the next 15 or 30 days, we could in fact do that?
Yes.
And Mr. Cardenas, wherever you are, I'm with you. I think that if we're going to do this, we, the city, should control it, regulate it, and that we should have the revenues for it. We should put it at all of the police stations, so you know that the people are safe, they won't be worried about injury or what have you. And yeah, I say it with a chuckle, but I tell you, that's what I would do with it. But last, we really-- our moment is now. Our moment is today. We've been discussing this for two-plus years. It's time for action. We monitor it closely, and if we need to make adjustments, we make adjustments. If we have add amendments today, even though I think there's merit in yours, Mr. Weisar, if we add amendments today, all we do is put this off. And when we put this off, we've got things like pension reform, we've got a budget, we're-- the planning guy could be doing something else except for doing this all of the time. So I really think we need to take a stand today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Alacon and Mr. Reyes are the last two speakers for now on the queue.
First of all, I couldn't agree more with Mr. Wesson. I think we should have done this a couple of months ago and move on, but I just want to make-- I want to reiterate this point about these facilities, the hospices, the residential care facilities, the licensed facilities, and the senior convalescent homes. All of these facilities are, I believe, what was the original intent of the law. That in fact, these are the places that should be using, because they are the most organized, they have staffing requirements relative to the medical teams, and they can easily form collectives, because they have an audience that's right there. The question would be, where do we grow it, and how much space do we allocate, and all of that? But so I've never had a problem with that, but when we keep talking about this cap of 70, it just irked me that we're not recognizing that there are all these other potential facilities that actually are the ones that I think were intended to be the ones that are doing this. Their patients are seriously ill, and they are the ones that I believe have the greatest potential to make this successful. Now, we have come up with another model. It's different. It was based originally on a sales model. City Attorney and most of us now agree that that model is not consistent with the law, especially after some court findings. And so we're trying to-- we're trying to squeeze this square peg into the round hole. What's the round hole? The round hole is those facilities that are licensed care facilities that treat the seriously ill. So I think it's okay as an experiment to try these other models, and I'm willing to vote for it as an experiment. But let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. That was not the primary intent of the original legislation. The primary intent was to treat the seriously ill and those who were in a position to be in a collective that could be managed by licensed professionals. And I believe that is care facilities, not stores. And so with all the negatives that have been thrown around, this ordinance is going to be one of the most far-reaching ordinances, not just because of the number and the space allocation and all that, but I believe the potential is truly in those care facilities, the ones that do want to do this. And I anticipate it's going to start first in the smallest hospices, because they have the most control and ability without upsetting their finances. Colleagues, we know the issues. Anything-- any amendments we introduce at this point is really delaying the inevitable, and to do so is causing a lot more hardship than to vote on something that we might tailor differently later on. So let's just get it out of here and figure out when it comes-- when we see what happens, how we have to improve upon it. But right now, you know, I think we're all tired of talking about marijuana.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
I need to call the question, please.
Okay. As a clarification, Mr. Reyes has called the question. Is there an objection to that? Nobody else is on the queue. Hold on. Is there any objection from council members on calling the question? Okay. There is not, so the question is called. Welcome to the rain. Hopefully, you're still on TV, so we don't have to-- this happened, I think, the first time we took this up. We have a number of things before us, colleagues. The suggestion of Mr. Wesson was to potentially move everything to committee. I consulted with the city attorney to see if any of these items were clarifications that would not necessarily trigger an additional week for the ordinance, and, Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report back on Mr. Weisar's motion or any other ones?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm speaking with Ms. Bird and Ms. Sirof-Cardenas. The 14(c) is a clarification, and that can be inserted into the language of the ordinance as long as council is aware that that's before them. They could vote on that, and a clean version can be submitted to the clerk by today.
Okay. So, Mr. Wesson, did you move to then have the rest of them go to committee? Okay. Mr. Wesson did-- Okay, and Smith had seconded. Okay. So what we will take up first then is-- we will take up Mr. Weisar's motion first, and then we'll take up Mr. Wesson's motion to move the others to committee. The first motion then is Mr. Weisar's clarification. Is there any objection to it, first of all? Yeah, point of information, Mr. Parks?
Where is the motion? I think I'm leaving. Don't worry about whatever you want, Mr. Parks. We'll do it. Just make the noise stop. Hey, forget the question.
Now, watch your words very carefully, Mr. Parks.
You can call me on my cellphone with the answer that is-- but what happened to-- what happened to the verbal motion? I mean, is that going to be the-- going to the--
Yes, that would be then sent to committee. There's a number of items then would be sent to committee. But before that, Mr. Weisar's motion would go first, and then Mr. Wesson's motion, seconded by Mr. Smith, to take the other motions that were made today and to put them in committee so that the rest of the ordinance can be voted upon. Okay? Let's open-- is there any objection to Mr. Weisar's motion, first of all?
Council--
It should be before you. It's a written motion, it's 14--
Council President--
Please consult your papers, yes. Point of information?
I've rewritten it to clarify it. I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, please.
Subsection two has operated continuously at its registered location since or before September 14, 2007, comma, or has both moved once within the city due to an enforcement letter from a federal government entity and filed a hardship exemption application pursuant to ordinance number 179,027.
Okay. Okay, so we have Mr. Weisar's motion. Is there any objection to Mr. Weisar's motion? Is there any objection to Mr. Weisar's motion? I'll just ask a second time? Okay. If not, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment of clarification. We now have before us Mr. Wesson's motion, which is to send the other oral and or written motions today to committee-- to plumb committee for further consideration. Please open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay, that carries. We now have before us two-- we still have the ordinance before us. Is there something else you'd like to clarify?
Council President, we have a few cleanups that came via Rule 38 letters.
Okay.
And I'd like to read them into the record. On page five, which is the-- at the top, it's paragraph number two. There's a date, and the date as currently written is November 12. We'd like to rewrite that sentence. So the sentence will say-- the phrase one will say was registered pursuant to interim control ordinance number 179,027 with the city clerk's office on or before November 13, 2007. Moving on, on page eight, under H, registration timetables, there are two references-- the first two references to the Department of Building and Safety. Both references should instead be to the city clerk.
Okay, those are the Rule 38 clarifications. Thank you. Colleagues, we will first take up-- we have two versions of the ordinance before us. One that has the 500-foot buffer zone for sensitive uses, the second is for 1,000 feet. We'll be voting on the 500-foot version first, and then if that fails, we'll vote on the 1,000-foot one as well. So this vote is on the 500. If we can please open the roll on the ordinance. I'm keeping it open. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
5 ayes, 9 noes.
Okay, if we can take up at 1,000 feet, please? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay. Since this is an ordinance before-- just so folks know, because you might not be familiar with the rules, all ordinances have to pass on the first reading with 12 or more people unanimously, or else they are carried over one week to a second vote, which will just as a simple majority vote, and it doesn't have to be unanimous. This will carry over then till Tuesday for that second vote next week. Thank you all very much. Next item, please.
Item one, call special for cards.
Item one is before us, and John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item number one. All right, Mr. Walsh, good afternoon on item number one.
I don't want a lot of long faces here. You did a great job.
You did a great job. You did a great job.
Sorry, Mr. Walsh, to, if I could just pause you for one second. I'm, I'm sorry, we're going to make sure you get heard. Hold on one second, Mr. Walsh. There's, just, we want to let members of the public know that there is a tornado warning that's been issued for South Los Angeles. Sorry, viewers there with inclement weather. We will try to get more updates from our emergency operations department, and if that has been activated, to let residents of South Los Angeles and, where else was it?
Whittier and Long.
And Whittier and Long Beach as well, to be concerned about possible tornado. There's been a tornado warning that has been issued. And Mr. Reyes, you had a clarification on the last thing as well, and then Mr. Walsh, your, your time will be saved, I promise.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to take a moment to thank the hardworking staff that's been doing and essentially trying their best to address the concerns of the city and responding to our actions. And I just want to take a moment to mention them on record and just thank them. Department of Building and Safety, David Lada, Frank Kusch, and Hector Potiago for all the hard work in getting this ordinance through for the past two years. Gil Goldberg, our planning director, Michael Legrand, Alan Baugh, Tanner Blackman, Helene Beavis, John Butcher, Charles Lee, and Sepulica Gurnarani. I apologize for your mispronunciation last name, but the planning department literally worked over the holidays, through weekends, many, many hours, getting the maps, the discussion. Police Department, our chief Beck, when he was Captain Beck, and chief Beck today, Captain Kevin McCarthy, Commander Gannon, from the CLA, Jerry Miller, Han Dao, Roberto Mejia, thank you, our CEO's office, of course, the city attorney's office. Thank you very much. I'll take a moment to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And Mr. Zine has just informed me that a tornado warning has also been applied here for downtown, so we will take assessment of that very quickly to see if, if there's any action we need to take to recess this meeting. Mr. Walsh, you have a minute, sorry, you have two minutes on this side.
Is this, is it leaking? Is the ceiling leaking? Ladies and gentlemen, business improvement districts, go to HollywoodHighlands.org. The pot industrial complex has left the room, they don't give a damn about any of this. If you are in the city of Los Angeles and you are in one of these districts, your landlord, your residential landlord in Hollywood, where I am, pays for it and passes it on. So you have, these business improvement districts are a huge waste of money, and taxpayers have to pay for it. And of course, these business improvement districts are full in Hollywood of medical marijuana clinics. Here's a patient here. I want to say, finish off by saying, you tried to throw me out of the meeting and there was a tornado, tornado warning.
Sorry, sir.
God is watching over me. Thank you.
For the record, nobody was, there's no attempt to kick out Mr. Walsh this morning. Next, if we can take a vote on this item, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item five was called special by council member Smith, and an amended motion has been circulated.
Mr. Smith?
We allocate some of the money within the grant, so there's no additional expenses or changes other than reallocation for an additional personnel for bookkeeping purposes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll accept that as friendly. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25, called special for cards.
All right, item number 25 is before us. We have a card from Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks here? Go once, Mr. Sacks, twice, we'll close the public hearing. Then, any item, any members wishing to be heard on 25? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 26, called special for cards.
Hey, Mr. Walsh, on item number 26, if you'd like to come forward.
HollywoodHighlands.org, 50,000 a month, we're approaching a quarter of a million hits driven by this, this hearing.
Talk about the item before us, please, sir.
Okay, this is a reward. Again, I have said, we're all for the rewards. Where is the reward to catch the Nazis, the skinhead Nazis who burned down the Hollywood church, which now you want to make into a bar? You've changed, the.
Still for the record.
City Council has changed, wait a second. For the record, you changed the zoning so a bar could be there, and you met with the bar owners. For the record, if I'm lying, lie. Okay, God, get ready with the thunderbolts, let's see if anybody here lies. Notice they're quiet. What I said was true. And I will finish by saying HollywoodHighlands.org, and if I wasn't thrown out, you could look at the tape. I had nine seconds and two armed guards put me out of here because I spoke about the mayor and his crookedness and his divorce.
Sorry, sir, we have a reward motion before us, that is what is before us. Thank you for your comments. If we can please open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 27 for cards.
All right, Mr. Sacks is not here, and Mr. Walsh, you have item 27 before you.
Here is where you wimp out here. You will not name the gangs. Various crimes perpetrated by alleged gang members. When you don't name the gangs, you sell yourself as wimps. What are you afraid of? I'm not afraid of the gangs. You want me to tell you the name of a gang? 18th Street. They used to be in our neighborhood, we pushed them out. I'm telling you, if you want to know what's happening in this city, don't go to the LA Times. They treat the mayor like Monica Lewinsky. Go to HollywoodHighlands.org and find out what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. That'll close our public comment for 27. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Has are posted and referred. Next order of business?
Yes, is clear.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Again, the, the main announcement right now, there has been a tornado warning for both Long Beach, South Los Angeles, and downtown, excuse me, until 1:15. So it's the next 15 minutes. If you're watching this live, please do all you can to ensure that you're in a safe area right now, and we will do the same. I advise folks, unless we have one adjourning motion, let's make that quick. If we can please rise for adjourning motion. And Mr. Zine, we'll recognize you. If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for adjourning motions. Thank you.
Thank you. Request for adjournment memory, Bertram Sidios passed away January 3rd. Bert Sidios, born September 18, 1935, passed away January 3rd. Raised in Los Angeles since a young adult, recreation director for Venice Beach, named Junior Mr. Muscle Beach. Years later, he served as a fireman in the city of Hawthorne, founded, was president of BMC Landscape, first California corporation established in 1985. His accomplishments include member of the Jonathan Club, president of the CLCA, first late person to serve on the Daughters of Charity Board of Directors, Board of Directors Pepperdine, Board of Directors Mount St. Mary's College, Board of Directors St. Francis Medical Center, Board of Governors of the California Lincoln Club, Regional Planning Commissioner for the city of Gardena, and four-time chairman of the Los Angeles County Judiciary Procedures and participation with numerous campaign elections. Was instrumental in numerous legislative actions, and was a Californian delegate in 1990. True humanitarian, which was evident through his work with charitable organizations and public-private associations. Survived by loving companion, 20 years, five children and many grandchildren, great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace. Bert Sidios, I served with him on the County Judiciary Procedures Commission, a wonderful man who passed away January 3rd. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. If we don't have any other adjourning motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? We will next be in session tomorrow, that is Wednesday, here at 10 a.m. in council chambers. Again, everybody, please be safe, and we will see you tomorrow. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.